January 7th, 2019, Hingham School Committee meeting. Thank you for being here tonight. Just a note, this meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. Also, just wanted to let folks know, I knew Dr. Jamie was not going to be here tonight, and Dr. Gallo had an appointment, so Mr. John Ferris will be our co-leader for tonight's meeting. And John realized that he does not have the, some technological-
I don't have a pen for this.
Oh.
This last three agenda up there.
To do the overheads?
An adapter, because this is a new piece. We're one-handed, but this one doesn't.
So-
Do we have enough copies for-
Yes, so they're, so-
Everybody has an agenda.
Everybody, everybody, there's agenda, extra copies of the agenda up there. Really, I don't think there are really any charts, other than maybe the enrollment chart.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I can make a bunch of copies of the enrollment.
Alright, I think we're okay. And even like the warrants and things wouldn't have been, those are just word documents, so, okay. And they're all drafts, so, anyway, so forgive us, particularly those at home watching for the blank screen to my left here. Alright, so thank you, and welcome, everyone. Item number two on our agenda is approval of minutes. Do-
Let's go.
I know, we've got a lot of minutes to approve, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on October 15th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any edits, comments?
I just have one thing that's really nifty, but under Student Communications, 5.2, NEPH, not NEF.
Just in case somebody's looking for a charitable organization.
Well, I'm sorry, can you-
NEPH, NEPH, not NEF.
O-P-P-H.
Yeah. Sure. Yep. Alright.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
And-
And just so you know, like, certain simple spelling edits can be sent directly to Pam, and then she could correct them in our packet.
Okay, it's good to know.
Just so that our meetings can move a little bit more timely. I'm not really interested in spelling or typo errors, more content. So just basic spelling for any, any of us, just please send them to Pam, she'll get them updated.
Okay.
Or any errors, or whatever. And I was kind of carrying them in over the holidays.
Glad to hear that. Right. No, that's a good clarification, because there was, and there had been some confusion about what we could and could not do over email with the minutes, so totally understandable.
And if it's a PM-
Yay. Right, okay.
Not my issue.
Alright. Do, we want to approve each one individually, or keep going?
Yeah, you asked them individually.
So, alright, so we had a motion, and a second, and with that correction, all in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, minutes approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on November 15th, 2018.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee and Long Range Planning Subcommittee meeting held on December 1st, 2018.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 18th, 2018.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carlos. And questions, comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, one more.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 20th, 2018.
Second. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Hi, I actually have some comments. Under number two, where we say, receive update on superintendent search process, I would like to add the term "community input" in, ahead of submissions. And "community" and "input" would be capitalized, and that's what we titled the forms. And then, in the second sentence, we say, "These submissions were made in paper form," and I would like to add "and Google Forms."
Okay.
And then, there's a typo in the, it was, and then the next sentence, "It was agreed to set aside time at the start of the meeting to allow members to read through them," instead of that. And then, in the number, section three, it says, in the second paragraph, it says, "Liza O'Reilly, Carrie Neen, and Carlos De Silva gave feedback on," we should add, "references they called with Dr. Paul Austin," which is, that was the discussion, and consistent with what we did with the other candidates.
Because it wasn't your feedback.
It wasn't just feedback, it was regarding the references.
Right.
So, that's all.
Okay.
That I'm proposing.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor with those changes?
Aye.
Alright, great. Thank you very much. Agenda item three are questions and comments. I have a new little script to read, actually, for the questions and comments. So the Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed throughout the meeting. In addition, we have set aside time at the beginning of the meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If there are any guests who wish to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name, your address, and address your comments to the chairperson. And please remember that any comments or questions must respect the confidentiality of personnel and students, including the speaker's own child, and comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Does anybody have anything not on the agenda tonight? Nope? Okay, great. Then, item number four, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you very much. So in the packet, there's the, the January enrollment figures, which are really up from the October 1 figures by 14 students, and those 14 students are largely at the, primarily at the elementary schools. The East School is up by two from the October 1 count, Foster's up by nine, the, and PRS is up by one, and there's two increase in South. So our total enrollment's gone from, up by 14 from 4297 in the October 1 count to this current period of time. And I have not, I don't know what the cause of that is at this point, just because I wasn't prepared to speak more to the chart than to include it within the packages.
Okay.
Okay. Also, in the, in your packages is a Kids in Action report for 2018, and Kathy Jordan and Jackie Sisona are actually in the audience, if you had any questions on that. The, the, it shows the financials, it was a pretty good year for fiscal '17, '18, where the overall program came in positive by $47,000. The, and it's also, that, the other thing that's notable there is that was positive by $47,000 after we take out about 120, or somewhere around 120, $130,000 for the budget. So, you know, that's, that's a good performance. Enrollment started out this year for Kids in Action around the same territory that it started the previous year, and enrollment tends to fluctuate on a monthly basis. Last year, at June, at this time, I think there were 181 students, there's about 185 now. Very difficult to do projections for where you think the end of the year is going to end up, but, you know, so, because, because students will fluctuate on a daily basis, so we don't really provide any guidance for what we do for the rest of the year, but there is offsets. I think somewhere in the vicinity of about $170,000 from Kids in Action to the FY '19 operating budget, and we would expect the operations to continue to be producing revenues that can actually pay back, really, the operating budget. You know, when you say, it's not really subsidizing the operating budget, because what it really does is, we provide transportation, so it's paying for transportation, we provide space, so it's paying for space, we provide the heat, so it's paying for heat. Kids in Action is the only program in the district that actually pays for the employees' health insurance. You know, we made that agreement with the town several years ago, and, you know, and it's actually, it's an excellent program, it's, it's well-run, the, the, the rates that we charge the public are, they're, they're actually below market rates, it's very, it's a very good program for the Hingham residents. So, you know, congratulations to Kathy and Jackie, who've done a stellar job over many years in producing, you know, a, a good program that benefits a lot of residents in town.
I would like to offer that. I, for my two kids, and it was one of the greatest programs, it really was, they're, they're long-grown and flown by now, but it was a great program, and you guys do great work there, they enjoyed every second of it, they actually didn't so much look forward to the weekends, because they wouldn't have their Kids in Action. But, so, thank you very much, and for that report as well. Item five is communications. John, do you know of any-
What I see is, I see in the packet that the, there's an update, SSEC update, you know, to the school committee, and it says, "Information to be reported periodically." And I think it's talking about the budget projections and other financial information associated with SSEC, in order to give the committee an update on the, the status of our member collaborative.
Okay. So that's the Sasha Education-
Yep.
Collaborative, if anybody has any questions on this piece, we could just follow up with Dr. Gallo. Student Communications, Emma Quilty can't be here tonight, but she did mention to me that if anyone ever, if there's anything ever specific that we are interested in hearing from the students, to let her know, and she can do some research, she can do some surveying polls, and, and bring those, bring that information back to us at the meeting. For other communications, I actually have one. I'm not going to give too, too much of it away, but there are some students, Maggie, two students, Maggie and Alex, at the East School in Mrs. Joyce's class, and they are looking to do a, to start a all-fifth grade read for a book that they read in Mrs. Joyce's class, so they are organizing that, and Maggie is going to try to come to our next school committee meeting and let us know what their plans are, and how they're going to organize this, and how they're going to get them all together to discuss it, so, give them a lot of credit, they are, she's a, they're fantastic kids, so I think it'll be, it'll be nice if they can make it. So I told them I would give them the plug tonight, that that would be at our next meeting. Alright, any other communications? Alright, so, item six-
Is there anything related to all the Hingham?
I will let them know, definitely. Most definitely. Alright, item six, new business. So we have a draft of the proposed superintendent goals for Dr. Gallo for the rest of her tenure. She's not here now to discuss them, but if folks have questions or comments, I think you could email Dr. Gallo about them. They're basically transitional goals, to help in the, the transition to the new, to the new superintendent, although, as always-
This morning, I said, "You only have three?" And she said, "Well, I'm only here for probably a year, so..."
I know. But it was, I, I, it's just, it's, it is, Dr. Gallo for sure, she added some new professional development goals, which is, which is great to see. Alright, so, new business 6.2 is, we're going to move into discussing some warrant articles. So the 6.2 is the possible warrant article for feasibility study for Foster Elementary, and to act as appropriate. So in your packets, you'll see some draft language that John provided for, just his and the administration's thoughts on what we want one of these warrants to look like. John, do you want to-
Yeah.
-take us through them all?
Sure, yes. So the, in the letter that I drafted, I actually included, there's, there's a number of warrant articles, as well as, you know, a couple of votes in here, because be, by January 22nd, we're supposed to submit warrant articles to the town, so, for include, for consideration and inclusion in the warrant by Selectment and Advisory Committee. So, you know, thinking about that deadline, it's time to, we, we, there's a few things that are pretty clear, and hopefully we can vote on tonight, and there's other things in here that the committee may want time to digest, and I think that what may be appropriate is a discussion tonight, to determine, you know, where everybody sits. I mean, if there were consensus, then I think that we could take action, but if there isn't, we still have January 17th, which would be, we have the 10th this Thursday, which may be a little fragmented, if not all committee members here, but we do have the 17th as a budget date. So, you know, at that point, we could in fact take the vote on the warrants, and I could get them up to Town Hall by the 18th. Okay, so, so, you know, with that in mind as a timeframe, that's why we're presenting these warrants now. As we all know, that this year, the MSBA did not accept Hingham into the eligibility-
By which date?
It's, um, January 22nd is the date they're supposed to be NK, but I'll get them in on that Friday, which is the 18th, which would be the day after the committee-
This month, I just, okay.
Presumably votes.
Thank you.
Okay. It's the, typically, it's January 20th, but the 20th falls on a Saturday or Sunday, so it gets-
Okay.
And then Martin Luther King falls on the 21st, so it actually got pushed to the 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
So the, there's a couple of articles in here regarding Foster Schools, and these, the first article that I wanted to talk about and recommend is, you know, for Foster School, Foster School has been draining resources, it's, it needs the resources in order for, you know, keep the building alive, viable, and in good shape, and the building is in good shape. However, you know, as, as time goes on, especially in light of the fact that we weren't accepted into the eligibility period with the MSBA this year, you know, my thought, my thinking on that has to do with, you know, we had an emergency here with exhaust system costing, you know, $9,000, sort of unexpected. We've had, we have an electrical evaluation done of the, the actual main switch, and the replacement of a breaker at the cost of, you know, about $12,000. And we also have some other work to do in the building, such as, you know, put a quick connect in, so if we were to have to bring in a portable generator, that we could connect, and we wouldn't lose a lot of time at school. The evaluation also said we should probably do some more work on some of the breakers that are, you know, within the system. You know, with all these things in mind, and, and these are, they're all big items, right? The quick connects $55,000, the circuit is, you know, $27,000, $28,000 to sort of rebuild some of the breakers, to make sure that, you know, they stay stable. And of course, anything could happen at any point in time, we could have another steam leak, we could have a pipe break, and we do bring in emergency personnel quickly, if there's asbestos on the pipes, they have to do, through a process, so none of these things end up being cheap, like, it's just a couple of thousand dollars, right? They all end up, you know, costing, most often, at least in the five-digit range, sometimes 10, sometimes between 10 and 20, most of them tend to fall within the 10 and 20. So my thought with that was, in order to buy us some continued time with this building, and to make sure that we can sustain the building, and then also, put it in a position where it's not going to draw all our capital, because, you know, we've been working on capital, the Long Range Planning Committee, and we started with, you know, $2.7 million and trying to work that number down, and we know we're not going to get $2.7 million. So what I wanted to propose here was an article for, you know, some Foster extraordinary, you know, maintenance capital, really. You know, determinant, you know, FEMC, Foster Extraordinary Maintenance Capital, this would have, and I'm proposing an amount of $350,000 as an article, and the reason I want to propose an article, because if we do the article, that money can stay there, and it can be spent over the next several years, or as needed, to deal with any of these emergency repairs that may pop up, and it won't be drawn from the rest of the district. So that's, that's the conceptual on the first piece of Foster. It doesn't address the MSBA thing, that we'll, we'll talk about those articles next, but what it does do is, it provides a source of capital for emergency repairs that will probably require over the next several years, as we continue to wait for the MSBA, or even get a new building built, okay? Because it's still going to take, you know, two or three years, or, or more, in order to get a remodeled structure, or a new building, built there. So, the, so the form of that, so basically, the potential language, and all this potential language would actually be reviewed by council, okay? So, and this, this is no way intended to be a legal thing, but, you know what, if you take the, the existing warrant articles, and you read their language, and you sort of mimic it, it would sound something like, "Will the town vote to appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds an amount of up to $350,000 to be expended under the direction of the 2017 School Building Committee for the purpose of funding Foster School extraordinary maintenance capital needs?" Okay? And the, the other piece of this is, I suggested the School Building Committee for, for two reasons. One is, I think it will continue to keep them engaged, and, and the second reason is, I think that the committee that's established actually has a lot of knowledge about buildings, and they have, you know, we have some people with engineers, and people with experience in the building trades, and therefore, I think that they can be very useful as a sounding board to me, when I try to say, you know, okay, here's what, here's what I'm being told, here's what, you know, and I believe my, my staff, I think my staff is great, I think they do an awesome job, between Doug Foley, who's an engineer, and Katie Harmon, do a great job, and I think they do an excellent job talking to the vendors. But the Building Committee people have people that build, and are aware of these things, and therefore, I think that they could be a great sounding board to me, and it will also keep them engaged, and allow them some authorization money to, you know, help us sustain the building until such time as we get a plan for a new building, or a remodeled building.
Do you, do you want to take questions now?
I'm happy to answer any question.
I have a couple, but do you-
Yeah, I have a couple, too. I guess I, I had asked John today for more details about the types of maintenance that he envisioned, so he explained some of them today, and, tonight, and then he listed most of the, I think the ones you, you named here.
Yeah.
So that helped me, because I think when we present this, having that real detail will help people understand, you know, why so much money.
Right.
So that, to me, is helpful from what was originally presented. I also think we should add into the potential language that this money would be until, used until a new or renovated project is completed.
Yep.
Because we need to put some kind of time span as to, you know, when we're spending this money, and that people can understand that it's not a one-time, it might not be one year, it, it could be-
It could be, yes, it could be.
But it could also be over, and it, maybe we don't even end up spending all of it.
Right.
It's not meant for-
Correct.
There's not a list of 350,000 worth of projects, it's only if, I mean, there are some, but it's only if needed.
Only if they develop. What I, what I do know is that $55,000, I know that the proposal to rebuild breakers is $28,000.
Okay.
You know, I know that the, I know that, you know, the, the exhaust fans that we're doing, and-
So I think, maybe we list-
Couple of that can push, the exhaust fans I have to do this year for $9,000, but there'll be others that are like that, that's the thing.
So maybe we include some of that detail of what we know, we have to do, and would be covered by this, and then-
Sure, I think that would be appropriate in the, in the comment, or, you know, in a comment, but not necessarily in the language, yes.
And then my other thought, when I was reading this, and when it's the School Building Committee that would be responsible for this, we're going to, and I questioned that, because when we were talking about the boiler breaking down, it was clear, you know-
Right.
It's the school department, school administration that's responsible for ongoing maintenance, it's not the School Building Committee. So now, this is-
Right.
-differing a little bit in that, and I respect that you want to have their expertise, so I think we need to write into the article that, that change of their charge and their responsibility, because in the warrant article with, where they were established, their responsibilities are related to the renovation, remodeling, or a new building project at Foster School, and not the ongoing maintenance of it.
Yep.
So, just so that, Linda, is that what you had understood? So just to make sure that the committee realizes we're giving them-
I was just going to say-
More responsibility, but that also the town would then understand that this committee is being charged with additional responsibility than they were originally-
Right.
-charged with.
See, that's where I don't know the legal ease, lies of whether this, by including, under the direction of the 2017 School Building Committee, if the town says yes, do that. Now that has changed their purpose to include that maintenance, that, but that's what the legal, that's what we'll talk about the legal people with, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and, but your explanation helps me understand why we would be having them do it, and not regular responsibility of school administration for maintenance, and school committee for overseeing the budget, so-
Right.
I understand that.
Well, my maintenance people will tell me all this stuff, but I mean, it's nice to have-
Yeah.
-a group of people that are knowledgeable, and understand the buildings and stuff, and can play off each other, and say, "Well, what about this?" Because, you know, we may come up with more cost-effective and better solutions, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I, playing devil's advocate a little bit, I, you know, we'll see how this plays out of, why wouldn't we just do an emergency reserve fund transfer? So I don't know how that's going to play out with our friends in advisory and Town Hall, and how we sort everything out, but I also understand, from a communicating the urgency of this issue of, we're telling the town that this building is in such a condition that we need this extra money to maintain it, that I think that message reinforces the true need and urgency of the need for the new project, so.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, I'm, now with more detail, I'm leaning in favor of this warrant article, but that's where I am right now.
So the Long Range Planning Subcommittee supports the recommendation. So just one of the fellow members of the school committee should know that the three of us are in agreement, fully agreement with them, so long as, you know, John clears with legal, the language in, in the charges, we have, we have made that pretty clear.
Yeah, the thing I'm concerned about with language, just with the emergency, is I could, emergencies tend to like draw on my resources, and myself, and everything, you know, so if you go for reserve fund transfers all the time, it's, you know, what do I do? It's a, "Here, here, I got this $10,000 thing, can I do that?" Or it's like, "Well, what, let's see what your budget looks like at the end of the year", you know, I mean, that's, that's typically sort of the, the type of response we get.
I guess-
Plus, too, what we'd end up doing is using capital, like, we get the appropriation for capital, and I got a list of things that I want to get accomplished, but when Foster crops up, some of that money is taken from these other buildings, and put into that, and then I'll, I won't get something done.
I, I, I understand that. I guess I also think of it as the winter of 2015, and we had all the snow, and-
Yep.
We went over budget by, at the end of the year, and then, at the end of the year, it was understood why we went over budget, which was because of an emergency situation, and then the reserve fund transfer was made to balance the budget, so.
And all that was a lot of work on my part, too.
Okay, okay, so that, well, so-
2015, and I never want to repeat 2015.
Okay, well, so then, that's, that's more explanation of justifying why-
And all my work, don't get me wrong, I don't think, I don't want anybody that I might work.
And you have a lot of work to do.
I have a lot of work to do.
Right, so, so then, that's a good explanation of another reason and detail of why you're proposing this. So thank you for that, because that makes me understand it better.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Sorry, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just processing some of it through my head, too, because I'm thinking of the, this being extraordinary maintenance, not just emergency maintenance is what-
Right, yes.
-what I like about having this as a separate fund, because just to transfer money out of reserve to cover emergencies, it's not just to be doing emergencies, it's to be doing, you know, it's meant to fund some of the other things that are done. I guess- I guess my only thought is giving this, putting this under the direction of the School Building Committee, I feel at some point we have, I mean, we need to ask that Building Committee, are they, is this something that they want to do? Is this something that they feel comfortable doing? And I don't know if you've had that discussion with them, or if Long Range Planning has had that discussion with them. So there are some members here tonight, I don't know if we want to, if you want to chat about it, if you want to consider it...
I think I may...
Sorry, am I coming up right, or Linda?
Linda Hill.
Oh, the microphone.
Thanks, Linda.
We generally discussed it just for a short period at our last meeting, but we haven't, we don't have any details, we were waiting really for what you guys were going to move forward with, so I think at this point, that would be something as a next agenda item to talk about at our meeting as well. The committee members haven't seen the warrant article, or the proposed warrant article.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill, for the Building Committee. I would say I think the committee in general is eager to do something. You know, we've talked in general terms, like Linda said, obviously very disappointed about the decision in December, but to the extent that there's something that we can do to help, and there's money available to do it, then I think we're eager to. I think you have a group that has some expertise, has some experience, and is eager to do something to alleviate the situation, so...
Okay, no, that's perfect, great, thank you. Yeah, I mean, that's, sort of, I mean, I sort of had initial concerns, too, but I do think there is some expertise on that Building Committee, and there are some people eager to get to work, and that we're planning to get to work on some things, assuming we were, you know, if we'd gotten funding from the MSBA. So I'd like to, you know, tap into that expertise and to the folks who are eager to get working on Foster School, so, all right. Other questions or comments right now on that particular proposal? Oh, yes, come on up, Sarah.
Hi.
Hello.
Sarah Abbott, 23 Summit Drive. Thanks for this information. I guess my biggest question is, I feel like it's a lot to, not to take away from what the Building Committee has done in the past, and some of their expertise, I just wonder if it might be prudent to think about not necessarily carrying over everyone that was on the Building Committee, and having those folks reapply, and bring in maybe some other people who have other, more current experience, being actually inside the building. I know, my thought was, is once we were denied the funding from the MSBA, that the Building Committee, when the warrant was created for that committee to come together, they sort of ended their term, too, and if we wanted to recreate the committee, that would be great, but take into consideration there might be other people, or there could be people who are on the committee that aren't here tonight, that, given the short time span that we have, don't want to add this to their plate, nor is it necessarily, I think, something that the Volunteer Committee should be doing in this regard, it's such a big part of what's going on at Foster. And I'm also concerned that, while $350,000 is a lot of money, just adding up some of the numbers that you spoke about, John, it's already coming up close to, if those things happen, $100,000. And if this building doesn't get put together in the next three years, and we have more problems coming up, you're going to run out of $350,000. So then what's the plan? And I'm hopeful that maybe this group will also consider sort of a bigger, broader picture, and consider Plymouth River in this entire situation. We're going after money just for Foster, how are we going to get the MSBA, because I'm assuming we don't want to pay for everybody out of pocket, to consider Plymouth River's situation? So I just hope that when you're putting these warrant articles together, we're thinking longer term than just Foster, which is obviously a primary concern for me, because that's where my children go to school, but I'd love to see the town and the School Committee think about the other school in town that hasn't been fixed by the MSBA. Thanks.
Yes.
Hey, guys, Evan Sheehan, I'm a member of advisory. I have a question, John. Do we have any history where we've done kind of maintenance and operation, albeit extenuating, you know, extenuating circumstances, place that in the hands of somebody kind of other than administration and School Committee?
That's a good question, Evan. I don't know if we have, but, you know, the way I understand the warrant process to work is, I mean, the Building Committee was established in 2017, and it stays the Building Committee forever. Just because we didn't get accepted doesn't mean it's not the Building Committee any longer, so it is a body, it's intact. And my thought is that, from what I know about town meeting, is that if you, if town meeting says, "We want this group to do this", I mean, typically, there'd be, you know, the ones that the town would give them, "Here's the money for feasibility, you go build the building", and then they have autonomy with that for the most part, right? And then they'd say, "Here's the money to actually do the construction", they give it to the Building Committee, and then they have autonomy to do it. So my thought with this, and I don't know, that's why the legal would have to check it, is, you know, here, can I give this group, this money to the Building Committee to, you know, help us, you know, maintain it? So I think it's a legal question that I would have to ask, I don't know about the history of it.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe just quite simply you can change the words, "under the direction of" to "with the consultation of", so it's more of a collaborative effort.
I was thinking the same thing, yeah. A little uncomfortable, it's the "under the direction of", where it seems like it should be something that the administration should really be leading.
I understand wanting to lean on the expertise of the Building Committee, but really, since it's maintaining the buildings, it seems like it really should be on the School Department.
Yeah, no, I was writing that down, some language similar to that, because I would agree, and, sorry, Linda and Ray, when is your next Building Committee meeting?
February 6.
It was February 6.
February 6, yeah.
I think we had planned that to be shortly after the School Committee, so we'd know what type of action the School Committee took.
What's today?
I believe it's February 6.
February 6 or end of January?
I think it was February 6. We would initially think in January 30, but I have a security form that day, so I think we made it February 6.
Wednesday, February 6, at 7:30.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Could I also ask, how many Foster parents and teachers are on the Building Committee?
One Foster parent, I'm an ex-Foster, graduated Foster parent, no.
There's two.
Two, three.
There's three Foster parents.
I was a Foster parent.
Okay.
Plus someone who's an East parent now, but went to Foster because he grew up in town, and he's an engineer. There are no teachers on the Building Committee.
Well, and the principal's like an ex-officio.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
We invited that to the first, the last meeting, and that was the first one that she had come to under the new principalship.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to address one of Sarah Abbott's concerns about PRS, and to mention that we are definitely talking about PRS, getting money for Foster doesn't preclude taking care of the issues at PRS, in our thoughts.
Okay. Sorry.
Hi, I know you're thinking about PRS, I'm just thinking like...
We're acting on it.
Right. Having, I don't know, the MSBA, I've never worked there, but having worked in government before, I think although they're not saying that they won't consider Foster or PRS, I'm just thinking, sometimes you've got to look bigger picture, in some ways, I'm just hoping that we're kind of thinking outside the box, and not just planting all of our, putting all of our eggs in one basket. I really am concerned about, I will support, obviously, going to the MSBA, but I'm concerned about putting all of our eggs in one basket again, thinking that we're going to get the money, not, not wink, wink, this December, and we don't, and then more things happen, and we don't, and then you try to ask money for PRS, and they're like, I mean, you keep asking for Foster, and it's not happening. So my, that just, I'm trying to think of, you know, really trying to just sort of think, encompassing how we can get this done.
Is there the PRS projects with MSBA are separate program from Foster, so that is...
I recognize that, if we had a horrible 2015 situation again, and something happened...
Right, we definitely are...
I'm just voicing my opinion.
Yes, thank you, yes, and we definitely hear you, and it is, it's on our list of work.
Thank you.
Yes, it definitely is. So thank you for the reinforcement of that.
Hi, so Ray Estes, so I think what you've been talking about with respect to PRS is the windows, and perhaps some other small projects, I know the security discussion is ongoing, but let's be clear for the folks at home, that PRS is not in the same condition as Foster.
Correct.
And we don't want to be, you know, making folks think that we need a new school at PRS because we don't right now. There was money that was invested in that school 10 years ago that is very obvious and went a long way. I'm not saying that that school is going to be good for the next 20, 30, 50 years, but let's just make sure that we're not talking about the need at PRS being at the same level as Foster. Just a question, because I came and laid apologies, did you already discuss the article, doing something with the existing article?
Not yet.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't, I didn't miss anything.
Just for verification, so we are on item 6.3, let's skip 6.2. Yes, because Ray Jones, I know. Okay, but I just want to get this straight for a minute, too, so...
No time to stop.
That's all right, that's all right, I figured it out, but just for our viewers as well, we did skip an agenda item.
All right, so, thank you, I appreciate everyone's comments and suggestions on this. So I think for, obviously, we have to do some more rewriting and redrafting of this particular warrant article, and some of this, I think when we discuss the item 6.2, which is feasibility study, that may lead us and help us with drafting some of this language as well. But thanks, everyone, for your input on that, and for the clarifications on some of the other building needs, and for ensuring that, you know, we are paying attention, and that we are recognizing that all of the buildings do need, do need preventive maintenance and extraordinary maintenance from time to time, and, you know, I mean, there is, there are many programs and many sources of funding for the schools, we've got, you know, the capital outlay budget, we've got the long-range planning piece of it, we've got the potential for Foster School extraordinary maintenance capital that we're going to propose. So it can get a little confusing as to where funding's coming from, but we are all on it, but it is good to be reminded of all the projects that we have. All right, so pause, so sort of pause on the warrant for the extraordinary maintenance for now, and then work to redraft that. Do you want to start, to go back to 6.2? And do the feasibility study?
Yes, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, so in order to, we'll start up with 6.2, and this has to do with the MSB, with the articles that were, and I think in their 2017 warrant, do you remember this, 2016 or 2017 warrant? Seventeen warrants where the town appropriated $750,000 for the purpose of paying cost of a feasibility study for Foster Elementary. It's a fairly long article, should I read it? So I'll just read what it says here, that the town of Hingham appropriate the amount of $750,000 for the purpose of paying cost of a feasibility study for Foster Elementary School located at 55 Donarav, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and for which the town of Hingham may be eligible for a grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, said amount to be expended under the direction of the 2017 School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow up to said amount pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town of Hingham acknowledges that the MSBA has not yet invited the town of Hingham into the eligibility period, and that the expenditures from this appropriation, and these are the key phrases here now, are subject to acceptance of the town into said MSBA eligibility period. The town of Hingham acknowledges that the MSBA has not yet invited the town of Hingham into the eligibility period, and acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any cost the town of Hingham incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town of Hingham, and further provided that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the town of Hingham and the MSBA. So it's, there's, that's really the authorization that sits in place now. It was an article back in 2017, and that article stays good forever until the voters would rescind it or do something different to it. That article, any articles from my understanding of the law stay until voters do something contrary. So in the, so now, in conceptually, there's a couple of things that I described in this letter. One has to do with just taking an approach to the warrant and saying, "Let's remove the restriction." Okay, so I'm going to spare everybody and not read the whole thing again, but, you know, in this, in this part here where it said, the, from this, are subject to acceptance by the town, in the new language, that in one proposal, okay, the town of Hingham acknowledges the MSBA has not yet invited the town of Hingham into the eligibility period, and period, and you just eliminate the rest of it. So we're eliminating, and that expenditures from this appropriation are subject to acceptance of the town into said eligibility period, okay? So if that, if a vote like that were taken, there'd be no acceptance, okay? It would just be, this money is appropriated, and it's available, and the taxpayers would have to vote that article. I don't know whether we play with an article or change it, or what the context of this will be, but conceptually, that's one option, right? We totally just remove the restriction, that puts it acceptance to MSBA acceptance into the eligibility period. And my interpretation of that is, once that vote would be taken, if it were positive, that that money becomes immediately available to the School Building Committee to commence work, okay? So that was, that would be one option. Now, the second option relative to that article would be to try to place a trigger into the article, and once again, I don't know what the context is, I don't know if one has to end and the other has to start, or how it would actually take place, but, you know, once I understand conceptually how the committee would want to act, then I can investigate more of the possibilities in real life. So with that, now, this is me drafting legal language, which is probably not the best thing, but where that acceptance part came in, you know, I would change that. So basically, we put a trigger in it, and the trigger would try to say, if, "We will do another SOI this year, we'll submit it by April 4, or whatever that deadline for MSBA is by that deadline, and then we can wait until the MSBA's board meeting in December to see if Hingham is selected again", okay? But the trigger that I would suggest in the article is that, "And the expenditures from this appropriation are subject to acceptance of the town into said MSBA eligibility period, except that funds shall become immediately available to the School Building Committee for the purposes of beginning a feasibility study design and other related work no later than December 2019, after the MSBA's board's regularly scheduled meeting, in the event that the town is not invited into the MSBA's eligibility period at that time." So my thought here, and once again, this conceptual, may not be the right legalist language, but my thought is that we apply for the SOI, we've been rejected twice, we've built twice with the MSBA, we're a great partner with the MSBA, we tend to come in on time, under budget, there's a lot of good to us, you know, maybe the third time's a charm, but, you know, and it's a big issue, right? Because, you know, I did some looking around today on the MSBA site to get an idea of what a building will cost, you know, and the buildings are probably going to be between $35 and $44 million, the MSBA comps, okay, for the appropriate size. And if the minimum reimbursement is 31%, you know, we're looking, as I said before, it's probably close to a $12 million issue, right? If you go it alone, you have to pay, the taxpayers have to pay that $12 million, but if the MSBA does accept us, then the MSBA will chip in a $12 million. So what I think this does is it gives us the ability to take one more year, you know, at the apple, file the SOI, wait, we have the extraordinary maintenance capital, in my view, you know, to make sure that if we have some, you know, we can continue to prepare the building, the quick connect, do the major maintenance things... to prepare the building, the quick connect, do the major maintenance things that we think are appropriate, so we make sure the building, you know, stays a good building. I believe it will be a good building. I believe that problems will happen, okay? I just think that with this building, bigger problems may happen, and therefore, we can do some extra, you know, some good maintenance to begin with. But we can wait until December, and if we don't get accepted next December, then, you know, this says, we make the decision now that we're basically, it'll be, we're going to go it alone, okay? That's essentially what it will, we'll say, it'll make the money available, immediately available to the School Building Committee to commence work. Now, even though the money's immediately available, and if they commence work, we could still file an SOI the next year. How effective that will be, will the MSBA come in and say, "Hey, now, you know, we will accept you," you know, "if we're waiting till December of 2020 and we've been spending money, they probably will not reimburse us, and they probably won't even use the information that we've accumulated with the study." But we don't know. So, basically, the second idea is, you know, one idea is, remove the restriction, make the money immediately available, which sends a message. And the second idea is, put a trigger on the money so that by December of 2019, if we're denied again for the third time in a row, that, you know, we look and say, you know, "We should start moving forward because who's to say we won't get rejected a fourth time in a row? And do we want to wait till April for another vote?" So, I think, did I get the concept? Was it too many words? Sorry.
So, Michelle, it is the recommendation of the Long Range Planning that, one, we apply once again to that SOI. Because we should. Would, subject to John checking the legal language of whether we could place a trigger on the current warrant article. We have a warrant article right now in place, well-written with the restriction. So, we recommend that perhaps we leave that alone, and then, secondly, we apply, we, we write another warrant article with a trigger that should we not be accepted, that the money become, the $750,000 become available in December of 2019 for feasibility study. So, that way, the building committee could start doing the feasibility study. And once the feasibility study is done, that perhaps then they can come back to the town with that study and how much it would cost, and then from the moment on, perhaps we should consider whether to go along, because I don't think we would be applying, you know, for the fourth time, for the SOI, if we're not accepted. So, if I may declare, so I'm sort of like repeating what John said, but it is the recommendation of this body, the Long Range Planning Subcommittee, that we move forward, leaving the warrant article as is, but then writing a second warrant article with a trigger.
I thought we were going to apply for a fourth time.
No, third.
Third time.
Third time.
Third time.
Third time.
As many times as we want.
Yeah, 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 okay. All right, let's, I'm.
We would certainly apply next year as well if we, if we weren't missing, but I just, I don't think anybody here could really assess what that, what it would do, you know, whether we would be accepted or not, but we, can't hurt to apply. Alls they can do, once again, is say, you know, "No, sorry," or hopefully, we'll get picked, so, I'm optimistic. I want to be optimistic at this point.
So, you said that if we started, say, we removed the restriction altogether and started our own feasibility study, that the MSBA wouldn't use the information?
Right.
Right, so that's the risk, we lose the $750,000.
Is that for sure, or?
Yeah, pretty much for sure, yeah. I mean, you know, based on a conversation, it's sort of like, if they have a prescribed procedure and stuff, so, I mean, even if we try to closely follow it, if we got into it, it would be difficult. And plus too, I mean, other information I've heard is that it would be, some, if we didn't do it, some of the designers wouldn't even, would even do it, because they wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to hurt their chances of other MSBA work, but.
John's right, Ray has the School Building Committee. So, John's right. So, for the holiday, I thought I would reach out to AI3, architectural firm that we've used on multiple projects very successfully over the last decade plus, and spoke to Scott Dunlap, who's one of the principals, usually the business guy, really great guy to talk to, very forthcoming, and, you know, I asked just that question. I said, "Look, you know, we got turned down twice, we really have a need, we need to get going on something, could we, if we were able to free up money, begin to do some work and then still resubmit an SOI? And if the MSBA then selected us, we'd kind of have another leg up and some advantage." And he said, "No." And the reason why is, there's a situation that happened two or three years ago in a North Shore town where they did just that, they, they started going it alone, as it were, but they continued to submit an SOI, and then they did get selected. And what happened was, the MSBA, while we were doing the middle school project, the MSBA kind of changed its structure a little bit. They added the eligibility period, and they also changed the requirements for choosing OPMs and designers and that selection process. So, what happened with this town, they started working with an architectural firm independently, then the MSBA selected them, and the MSBA said, "Well, the firm you're working with can't now bid on the larger project." So, what Scott said to me was, "No good firm," so, none of the good firms, right, would start working with us, knowing that we were still trying to get chosen by the MSBA, because once that invitation came, if it did, they would be foreclosed from bidding on the larger project, which is what they want, you know? They, they don't want a $750,000 project, they want the $40 million project, potentially. So, that's, that's one, that's one concern. The other issue is, very often, in my experience, from talking with OPMs and other designers on past projects, that it's very much a process, and the MSBA wants you to work with them as a partner, and if you get ahead of them, or if you go off on a tangent in a direction that's not how they would like to see it, they won't, not only will you not get reimbursed for the funds that you expend for that work, but they won't take that work into account, and you'll have to kind of start over again. And again, you'll probably run into the same problem with, with designers and engineers doing that as well. So, that, that's a concern. Going it alone, I would say, is something you want to seriously consider. The, the one thing that Scott did mention to me that he would be willing to help with is taking a look at our SOI. There are hot-button issues, there are, there's certain phrasing that can be incorporated that perhaps the MSBA would view more positively, and he'd be willing to help us with that, and indicated that if you've got in touch with him and sent us, sent him what you had or what you were working on in terms of a refreshment, that he'd be happy to look at that and consult and give us some assistance with that. I think that would be beneficial. It can't hurt if this board is deciding to resubmit an SOI, certainly take advantage of that. It could only hurt, uh, help, rather. That's, that's what I have.
So, Ray, before you go, just to clarify for me, is also true that the MSBA feasibility study, they may be requiring additional items that we would not do, would not be required if we're doing privately, isn't that correct?
Yeah, it's very much a process. Now, the eligibility period, so you have to hoop jump, you know? We, as a town, have already kind of taken steps that typically towns would go through in the eligibility period, forming a building committee, appropriating money. So, we're, we're ahead of the game in that sense, and that would not be a problem. But if, if we, you know, did a study that didn't address the right things, or, you know, right now, we've done some site investigative work that's very benign, that's just identified locations at the property where we could build if we were going to build, and identified constraints, right? And we've also done an enrollment study that the administration headed up and we assisted with this year, and I think that, that's beneficial. So, I don't think they would look at those things and say, "Oh, you have to do it over again." The MSBA is still going to do their own enrollment study anyway. Our information may be informative to them, but they're still going to do their own study. We did a study a number of years ago, and they still did their own with the middle school anyway. So, but I think you're right. I think there, you know, if, if we started to do certain things with a firm, it may not cover what they want to see. You have to go through the process with them, step by step. That's why you go to the website, there are 10 modules, they're very specific on how they want to work through the core program, and that's why, you know, towns that partner with them and follow the process are very successful.
That'd be good, thank you.
So, that's more information, I feel like, than we had before. And makes me want to rethink what we were recommending.
That's okay. We don't have to vote tonight. Doesn't change what we recommended.
Wait, this is just, this is for your discussion, for your thoughts?
This is just for discussion.
I mean, you know, that's, that's why we wanted to put this out early so that you have time to.
Yeah, this would not change anything that we recommended in terms of trigger or not trigger, because, see, the reason why, and I'm glad the questions are being asked, the middle school was built on the model, you know, design, and it could be that the new treasurer now may come up with her own thing. And if so, it may be part of the requirement that in the feasibility study, they have to look at certain things, you know what I mean? So, but doesn't change our, our recommendation. So, our recommendation essentially is that, perhaps, and John will verify that with the town legal counsel, whether, you know, it's even legal for us to sort of like propose, I mean, we can propose an article, obviously, we can propose anything we want. So, if we are in agreement that we apply, and by December, obviously, we would hear from them and whether we have been accepted or not. If we have been accepted, guess, guess what? The $750,000 that has already been approved to be used for the feasibility study will be used, right? Because that has already been approved by town members, by taxpayers. If not, then, having that warrant article be approved already, right, waiting, you know, that we remove the trigger, then the feasibility study started, it starts. That sort of like saves us a lot of time, because obviously, this will not happen for another two, two, three years. At, at least, you know, nothing will be done, be done in town if we don't have a feasibility study in place, right? That is the first thing, in order for us to go to the voters and say, "Look, this is how much it costs to build the building. We applied three times to the MSBA, we didn't get it. So, now, with this in hand, and, and that has been done by the building committee that day, the voters, I mean, there was appointed by all three bodies, right? The advisory, the school committee, and the town selectmen, who then come back and maybe we have to, you know, I don't think will be enough time for us to present the feasibility study by the April 2000, I gotta just think in here, by the April 2020, there would not have been enough time for the feasibility study, perhaps. And then, you know, maybe we'll have to have a special meeting in, around, you know, the fall of 2020 to discuss Foster in detail. So, that's pretty much what it is. So, it doesn't change anything.
It did change some things for me, Carlos.
Sure, go ahead, speak up.
Because I was thinking, if the money is triggered, the MSBA says no in 2019, the money, $750,000 is triggered, we start the feasibility study. I didn't know that about the architectural firms, that we're gonna, we really are going to, it's really going to cause some problems if we do that, is what I'm hearing, Ray, from what you just said. So, wait, 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 because I'm not done. I'm thinking this all out loud. Because, because what I had thought originally is, is that we could have triggered the $750,000, start the feasibility study, apply for the SOI, and maybe still get it, woohoo! And we might be allowed some of the $750,000, but we will have gotten started, we will have acknowledged to the town and the residents of Foster that, yeah, we know we need to do something. But if we just are totally eliminating ourselves from any possible state money, that's where I sort of get, like, nah, it's not a good idea. We need to keep those options open. And what I'm hearing you say is that we're not, if we trigger that $750,000, start in December of 2019 when the MSBA says no, we're eliminating ourselves from the state process altogether. Pretty much what that sounded like to me.
For the fourth time.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can't definitively say that.
Yeah.
That's, that's the information that I'm getting from a professional architect with whom we have a longstanding relationship, and someone whom I trust and believe, who's one of the leading architects working with the MSBA for well over a decade. So, when he tells me that, I believe him. I'm not saying that it's definitive. In, in my mind, if you're discussing an article that includes a trigger for some point in the future, if we get turned down by the MSBA again, and you want to free up that money to move forward with feasibility, you're doing so thinking you're going it alone. And, and that's when you, you have to have, start having that conversation now, and the town has to be willing to buy into that concept now, even though it may not happen until down the road. Now, is it definitive? No. Could you still apply and maybe get a good firm? And I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think you're running a risk that maybe you couldn't, and you could get foreclosed out. So, it's, it's, it's not an easy decision. But then you've got plenty of folks who are saying, "We need to do something."
That's right.
And I think that's why, in my opinion, it would probably need to have, be a larger conversation with selectmen advisory and others making decisions, you know, about how to propose and craft an article that would enable you to do something, possibly take advantage of grant money if it were available, but understanding that, how many times can you get turned down? And we can't not do anything. So.
So, that, that is my understanding, and sort of the thought process was, it's probably worth making, taking one more attempt at the MSBA, but in the event we do get turned down in this year again for a third time, then, taking the trigger out, that we would then expend the money ourselves, and knowing that if we did that, we are highly likely going it alone. And that has some appeal to it, because, I mean, it is not an immediate fix of the Foster School, but at least it gets us moving to some conclusion, once we hear back from the MSBA on our third choice, on our, on our third try. And if we, because we can't just continually keep reapplying and reapplying, right? I mean, it can't wait forever, right? Maybe it can, between, maybe we can wait another year because we've got some funds put aside, apply for the MSBA funding one more time, and then, if we don't get the funding or don't get invited into the eligibility period, then we've signaled that we're, the town is willing to go it alone. But that is a broader conversation to have with other town groups.
But should we apply one more time, or should we apply two more times?
And I, because I heard Senator O'Connor say that there's a good chance we'll get it, maybe not the first, you know, maybe not the third time, but maybe the fourth time.
Well, I mean, I think that's, I think that's the conversation that we have to have with the, with not only the Board of Selectmen and advisory, but also, that's a conversation for the whole town to decide.
Yep.
Right? Right?
Yep.
So, I mean, Senator O'Connor did say that, but Senator O'Connor doesn't have kids at the Foster School either or teachers there, right? And so, I, so, I mean, I know he was trying to encourage us to be patient, but I don't think he was saying to be patient forever. And I think his message was a little bit that, you know, that money at the MSBA, that's our money too, right? I mean, we all pay taxes and that money goes into MSBA funding, so you should take advantage of it if you can, but I don't think, we can't, we certainly can't just keep applying and applying and whatnot. But that's my thing.
So, looking at all the projects, I'm leaning towards the scenario of the trigger of applying for a third time to the MSBA. And if we don't get it, then we're doing the project on our own. And I look at it, though, as, so we have three school projects. Two of them, we got state funding. The third one, we don't. Average is out of this total investment from the 2005 master plan, we got 25% support from the state, if you look at in the big picture. The other element is we're really risking the equity of all the students in the town if we're not doing something. We're also facing economic issues of, you know, listening to NPR reports on steel prices right now because of tariffs and everything. Construction prices are only going up. And with all the construction going on in the Boston area, construction prices are only going up. The more we kick this down the road, the total cost of the project will only increase. And interest rates are risky. So there is a point of we've got to finally do something because, you know, a 35, 44 to $44 million project now, the total cost in three years, if we wait, could, I mean, who knows what that could be? And that our share, you know, our share would be the same price of us going it alone. You know, do we also bid it out to AI3 and the other architects that work with the MSBA so that we have that institutional knowledge that they're bringing to us? And maybe we can do some things on our own, speed up the process, or not do everything the MSBA requires, but do most of it. So I'm, I also feel that if we get, the difference of putting in a warrant article in April for getting the feasibility now versus going, you know, seven months longer, that buys us time of socializing it too. And it shows the town that we are willing to go for a third time. And with all the extra work, we may get it the third time, but it also gives us a chance to get the organization in place of communicating to the whole town when we have a special town meeting to vote on the construction of what we need to do, you know, why we're doing this. And so I'm afraid of doing it for town meeting this year of going it alone, that we don't have enough time to socialize that issue. By doing this and stage, you know, we've already socialized it by forming the school building committee in the first place and the urgency of that. And that, when we introduced that warrant article, we reopened the warrant in order to put that in because of the urgency of the situation. So I think this only reiterates, it's going to happen and we have to have it happen. And this is, you know, we're making our best effort of doing what's best for the town. So it, do we want state funding? Of course we want state funding, but we've been trying and we're at a point where we, we're really in an emergency situation with the building and for the students. And we don't want to go back to 2003, 2004 situation with our elementary schools of that overcrowding again. So that's where I am on it.
So I agree with Karen, pretty much everything you said there too. But it lead, that kind of leads me to think that we just need to remove the restriction altogether, just because the rising price of construction. And I'm wondering, and maybe you know the answer to this, you spoke about the hoops that you have to jump through with the MSBA. All those hoops cost money. What's the price, is there a way to look at the price differential if we were to just go it alone and do it our way and have more control over the project too versus going through the MSBA?
Yeah, so there really isn't that much of a difference in price. People always talk about, oh, if you go it alone, it's much, I mean, if you work with the MSBA, it's more expensive. It's not necessarily more expensive. It can take longer and there can be more steps involved. But I talked to Scott Dunlap about this and he said, really, it's really not that much different because you're talking about designer services, engineering services, you're talking about construction costs, which are what they are in the given market. You know, I talked to Scott and he said, well, you know, if you wanted to work on a project now, we couldn't even bid on it because we're so jammed up for the next two years doing other schools, we, you know. And I think that's the way it is with a lot of firms out there. And construction costs keep going up and up. Talked to a cost estimator about it recently in town. And, I mean, we're probably at over $400 a square foot easily as an average. So those numbers, we're talking about about a 90,000 square foot building, 36 million, it's not hard to get to. Then you talk about maybe a 20% soft cost number in there and you're in that range that you discussed. So, right, right. So it's not, right, I didn't look at those numbers, but that's what it is. And so I don't know that it's any more expensive necessarily. The hoops is more just the process and doing it with them on their timeline and with the documentation that they require, the project funding agreement, feasibility agreement, all of those things, going through the process to choose the designer, to choose the OPM now, the way they have restructured it in the last few years. That's really what it is.
Okay.
That, I mean, for seven months, to me, it's worth one more try for $12 million.
Mm-hmm.
After that.
I don't want to wait a year and a half. That, to me, is risky.
Right.
So.
The community doesn't want to wait.
No.
Yeah, I have some numbers here if you want to. Yeah, I'd love to see. If you want to take a look. I pulled down all the elementary comps from the MSBA for the past several years. So, you know, in the square footage, I mean, the cost they're saying is like, you know, from 217 to current and between 418, 418 per square foot to 535. And soft costs are running anywhere between 28 and 30% or 25 and 30%. So on top of that, so. But you see a wealth of data here, the square footage, the enrollment, you know, and you can't get an exact match, but you got to presume, I think, Ray's, you know, thought about 90,000 square feet is probably in that vicinity and stuff. And, you know, you could find one in here, but you can sign some with, you know, 73, some with 84, one with 110. There's a whole list of them, so.
It's cut from the east, that's why I had that number.
Yeah, right. So that's, you know, so, and I did, I did try to, I did try to do a comparison today to see if I could find some elementary schools where they built it on their own and, you know, what their square footage cost per square foot was, but I just couldn't find anything on the internet. I mean, it just, I was looking, you know, there's nothing that was concise. You have national averages, right? And when you see 250 bucks a square foot, that's not going to be here, you know?
I know Newton did a school on it, though. I can remember what there is.
Yeah, that would probably be, but Newton's always going to be very expensive anyways, Liza, I'm sure.
Well, and that was a couple of years ago, so it may be like the balance.
Right. Yeah. And this thing shows from, you know, 12, November 12 approvals on, so you see that they certainly have. And I forget the square footage, but we did the middle school, but it was in the 300 range.
Oh, it was 285.
Yeah. So, and when we start that, 12? Or I forget, 12 or 13?
Special town meeting was October of '18.
Yeah, so.
Went to bid in March of 12.
Yeah.
And ground and chip.
So 285 to where we are today, you know, where the low one was 418 and that was back in 217. So they are certainly escalating.
All right. So John gave us a few options here for this particular article for the feasibility study. Do we have consensus that we want to, we want to propose a feasibility study that takes, that amends the current warrant article to lift the restriction of waiting for the MSBA, giving the MSBA one more round and then removing the restriction of waiting to be invited into the MSBA eligibility period? Do, is that the consensus of the committee or?
I would not recommend that you touch 2017 existing article. Leave it alone.
And that is our, the long-range planning recommendation.
I would not, not change that. Rather create a separate.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. So keep that and then, but, and then add a second warrant article to...
Create a second.
To create a second article. Okay, sorry. So is that the consensus then that that's what we'd like to work on, is drafting language?
That concept.
That concept.
Yeah, I can't think of a better way. To get the advisory committee and the board of selectmen involved using a warrant article.
Right. Okay. All right. Carrie?
So I would, I'd prefer to just lift the restriction altogether, but if we are going to, if it sounds like everyone else is thinking of reapplying one more time, can we think of, is there anything we can do in the meantime to move it forward? The Foster community's been very patient and we've seen this last December what happens, how the issues in their building impacts the entire school district. So are there things we could do, like getting bids, as Liza mentioned, or is there, what can we do in the meantime?
Well, I mean, that's where I thought the first article of getting extraordinary maintenance capital could be for us to, you know, work on that building and make sure that, hey, this building's going to be standing and it's going to be serviceable and the kids are going to be able to learn there until such time as we get a permanent solution. And, you know, I think that can, that's what we, that's what I thought. That's where the first article fits in in my mind.
Definitely. But in terms of socializing it, in terms of getting all of our ducks in a row so we can just hit the ground running as soon as we, if we get denied, hopefully we wouldn't, but if we were to get denied, so as soon as the money is released, we can really just get going and we have everything ready to go.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, that Article 1, sorry.
They're ready to go.
They announced with the building committee.
They're ready.
Right.
Yeah, I would think if we're going to submit this article, the building committee...
Understands that and get their act together in order to know what to do come December because come December, they're either going, they're going one way or they're going the other way, but they're going up.
Well, come December, we're going the same way, just depending on whether we're getting reimbursement or not.
Right. Yeah, exactly.
So we're going to hit the ground running regardless of whether we're accepted or not, if we had the bone with the trigger because it's the same, we're still getting the money.
Yeah.
We just need the money.
Yes. So they now would have a starting date of really going...
We've done all that we can do with the capital funds that were available last year. There's nothing else that we can do without more money because the next step would be moving forward with designing some.
Yeah, right.
But either way, we would be doing the same things, just depending on whether we're going to get reimbursement or not.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, the plan's the same. It's just how we're getting funded for it.
So Carrie, on the long-range planning that we had recently, there was the 7th, no, 27th, December 27th, we had three representatives of the Foster School area and one of them is the head of the PTO. And he was very pleased to hear our recommendation that he was going to bring back to the community in terms of the $350,000 if passed would be a plus because, you know, John can put, you know, you know, some preventive maintenance in place, you know, as the quick connect in case if we have an issue that, you know, like happened a couple of weeks or three weeks ago, then they can connect electricity pretty quickly and also the other, you know, items that they already mentioned. So that $350,000 sort of like, you know, help up to, let's say that we're not going to spend all that money, right?
Right.
But I don't see, I understand what Liza just mentioned, but I think we, we also, we want to be careful. Although we may be authorized by voters to set aside that $350,000, we don't want to spend that money unless we really have to.
Of course, yeah.
And I think, I think, you know, seven months goes by very quickly. And now our goal here is thinking about what we can sell to the voters. You know, if we say we, I actually thought about that. I mean, you're here in the meeting with the building committee where I said perhaps we should remove the restriction. But then I did a little more homework in removing the restriction, the voters may not go for that. So we got to think about, you know, what would they go for? Obviously, we don't know, right? We are, we are hoping that, you know, town meeting vote the way we are thinking, but let's just hope that way.
Okay. And we still need help selling it in. That's something that people can do now is help selling it in and making sure people vote in favor of it.
And because John's very valid point there that, right, it is a two-thirds vote at the town meeting and it's, and this article, as we're proposing it, is sending, is sending a message, right? If we don't get this money, we are going to, so we do need to get socializing that support for this warrant article as we want to present it. And I think, I mean, I think, you know, we all would like to lift the restriction, right? That would be, you know, that would be a great thing to do, but I just don't know that, but I think this is the most prudent way to do it and the way that we will have the most support is to do the article as proposed, give it until December with the MSBA, the building committee will be ready to go. It's not even a Plan A and a Plan B, right? It's still the same plan, it's just, to Linda's point, where the funds come from. So I think that this way is the most prudent way to go. I think we'd get the support from the town for it and, you know, we'll obviously talk to AdCom and the Board of Selectmen to get their thoughts on it, but I do think that is the most prudent way to go. So that's just my opinion. So Linda, yes?
Just, you know, talking about care for town meeting, you need the support up until the end of the board end. Because you need it when AdCom's deciding whether to support your warrant articles or not. So it really starts as soon as you work out the warrant article and submit it, that's when you really should be to start working on your support.
Okay. Thank you. Good clarification. Thank you. Josh, yes?
I was just pointing at the microphone.
Josh, excuse me. Joshua Ross, 125 Wapatake Road. I have a question. Since you said there's work that's already been done, does it still need to be $750,000? Has it been a big chunk of change taken from the capital money? I know, or is it negligible? I just, that was, I guess, one question, I guess, real quick, as we were talking about the other warrant article. I know the high school has, you listed off a bunch of things that you're looking to do for some safety and some proactive work done to the building. Can each one of those things be listed as a warrant article separately like we do for like the windows at the high school so that that money is already allocated to say like the $55,000 hookup you need? Can we do it that way where the stuff you know you're going to need to do gets listed separately and so that we can just bang those out and know that's accounted for and then kind of do a separate pool of money? I was just, because I know we do it for some other buildings when it comes to safety. So those are my really only two questions.
There had been no funds expended from the $750,000.
That money is still fully appropriated. The money that we referred to for doing the site assessment or some work on the land to determine if the land was buildable actually came from capital where we had some master facility planning funds and we took a portion, the school committee allocated a portion of that money to the building committee in order to do that study.
So the $750,000 solely from the...
That's right.
Yeah, I remember the numbers.
Oh, sure.
So I think, I think you approved up to $30,000 for the site assessment. I think we used 22 and change. And then the enrollment study was...
Six and change, I think.
Six or seven, something like that. So it's under $30,000 that was expended for that, that came out of school committee capital funding. So that would reduce the $750,000?
No, it does not. No, there's still 750. And, you know, we really can't reduce the 750. I mean, it's, the 750 amount should be hopefully still adequate to do the feasibility study when we finally get accepted or not get accepted. hopefully still adequate to do the feasibility study when we finally get accepted or not get accepted and, and do our own. So, you know, I think, and, and it's part of the soft cost of a project and, you know, the, the soft cost will be significantly higher. So, even if you didn't spend it all there, you're still gonna spend it on the other related projects. So, it all becomes part of the overall project. And as far as the, the individual items, it's, it's probably easier to get one article from the town because the, in the article, if you get the 350 from the town, that will sit there. That won't expire at the end of the year. That, the articles just sit there. And as it being up to, it becomes that source of capital that we can use to actually do that extraordinary maintenance. And, and the other thing too is, you know, I'm saying, you know, $55,000 on a quick connect. I don't have a quote that says that. I have a piece of paper on an email that says it's about $55,000, but they'd have to actually go forward and get a quote. And that's what you like to present to get line item type things on, on, on the articles, you know? Similar to the way we're gonna do the clear story windows a little later on. So.
But also, Josh, the other small capital things within each school are covered in our capital budget and those are all itemized. But they're not, you know, we don't need a separate warrant article for each individual item, cause that's one lump sum.
But I was thinking of the windows in the high school. I know it's been on, kind of come up a lot.
Yeah, that, we're gonna talk about that next.
Just, just an idea in capital, so, you know, we started the capital process this year at like $2.8 million. Last year, for our capital that we get an appropriation for, that's sort of like part of our operating budget, last year we got $1,023,000. So, you know, this 2.8 and we're, you know, with the long range planning committee, we've been working because we know we can't go to the town and say we need $2.8 million worth of capital. So, we're continuing to work to try to work that number down to some reasonable level that we see, here's the absolute bare bones of what we need and then we'll bring it to them and we'll still get less. But, you know, it's a process and, you know, and we, we, we continue to work it and, you know, sometimes we have to, you know, pull from, we were gonna do this project. It's not broken yet. Let's, let's, you know, put this money over here where it's broken and, you know, we continually manage it. So. And, I mean, I think it's a fair process. I think it's a thoughtful process. There's a lot of good people working on it.
I guess I would only ask if you guys decide or indicate this as emergency money, that you define what an emergency is?
We're, we're calling it extraordinary maintenance. It's not emergency. It's not, it's not foster, emergency capital maintenance. It's foster extraordinary maintenance capital. This is maintenance beyond what we could possibly budget for within the capital budget. And plus too, if we keep on putting it in the appropriation every year, it's just gonna drain from the other maintenance and capital needs that we have from all the other buildings. So, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to have, you know, that, that as an article so that we have that source of funds for the extraordinary maintenance that really we, we need to put into foster to keep it viable and, and a good building.
Right, because some of the funding will be used for preventative maintenance, new things, upgrades and whatnot, because that was sort of the rationale between, behind not trying to take it out of reserve capital, because we didn't want to just have to go there for emergencies. So, we're like, let's have a sum of money set aside to shore up what we have at Foster School now to ensure that it is, you know, it stays a productive and viable building for the next 24 months, 12 to 24 months as we await the next steps in the, in the process.
Yeah, and there's no saying we won't have to come back next year or the year after and say, hey, we need more extraordinary maintenance capital for Foster to keep the building viable until we get it built or we get it renovated. So, but, you know, with the, with the combination of these articles, we're, we're marching down a timeline where we think, okay, something's gonna happen in December and we're gonna get approved. We're gonna go forward or we're not and maybe we're gonna go forward. And that doesn't say we can't go back to the well again and say, okay, we got another two, three years before the solutions here. We're gonna need a little more extraordinary capital. And by that time, I'll know, you know, other things that, that, that genuine needs that we really should do to keep this building viable and safe and conducive to education for that period of time. We just don't know everything. Now, right now, a capital that we're doing, we're trying to say what's gonna go bad between now and June of 2020? So, that's a long way out, you know, when it comes to buildings and you got winters and snow and ice and rain and, you know, all that stuff. It's, it's a long way out. And, you know, stuff happens that we don't predict and we didn't know. And we don't always get the preventive maintenance dollars, right? We, we, we have to defer a lot of the preventive maintenance dollars so we can do the things that are actually broke and need fixing immediately. That's typically what gets deferred from that $2.8 million. It's like, it's a combination of, you know, safety. We need these things now, cause they're broke and here's the other things that we should do for preventive maintenance so we can keep the buildings from breaking. And those are the ones that keep getting pushed out. It's unfortunate, but, you know, it's probably a lot like a homeowner sometimes, you know? It's like, you wanna do it, you wanna paint the house and stuff and then the furnace breaks and, you know, what's gonna happen? The furnace is gonna get fixed. So.
All right, so we'll work on.
This was a good discussion. I think it was a great discussion. Yeah.
Great.
And I just wanna add that I certainly still do stand by there are original, the long range planning committee's original recommendation and that I needed a few moments to sort of process my new understanding of the finality of leaving the MSBA behind. That was a, a big pill to swallow, but if everybody else is okay with that, then so am I.
Well, I don't know everybody's okay.
We'll see however.
I still wanna sit there and be optimistic and think that we'll get in, but, you know. I, I mean, it's just, it's just a discussion that we have to have and understanding that, you know, there may be other actions that we have to take because things don't turn out in our favor.
Unless we can get the former governor of New York to donate a couple of billion dollars to us.
All right, 6.4?
Now, we're gonna get to some easier items, I hope, okay? So, these, these hopefully will be good news stories. And six four says it's the clear story window and it says it's the article, right? Cause we're gonna have some votes on clear story windows too. So, you, last year we got, had a warrant article in for $60,000 to do an evaluation, design work in, send the clear story window project at the high school, the gym windows where the, the cracking occurred, to do a design so that we could solicit a bid so that we could come up with a firm price to give to the voters for a town meeting in 2019. So, we've done that and, you know, at that point, we, we didn't know and, and we took that approach of getting the design money that previous year. We put on some safety netting to make sure that the building stayed, that, that people stayed safe in case something should blow in and stuff. That safety netting is still up. It's still safe and it's still in good shape. And, but we have gone out to bid. We thought that price was gonna be somewhere between 600 and a million dollars. And that was just too much that we didn't wanna like set aside a million dollars for something that may be within that range. So, we wanted to get a bid to, to narrow down the price. And I am happy to say that the bids actually came in. There's a high, we got four bids and we had a design. We, we opened them some, I think, December 19th or 20th, and the bid range was 723,100 at the high end and 478,400 at the low end. So, I'm really happy to say, and, and the bidder that came in at 478,400 was GVW Inc. The designer that we used for this was Habib and Associates. Habib has worked in, in the past with this vendor contractor and they are a good contractor and the bid price is, is a good firm bid price. So, that's the cost of construction, but what we should do is add a contingency to that as well, okay? A contingency, I'd recommend somewhere between 10% or 15%. Habib said 10. I think we should go 15, because this is just gonna be an appropriated amount of money from a different source. It's not gonna take from an operating budget. So, I'm sort of recommending that we put, put in a warrant article in the warrant this year for, you know, 550,160, which would be the, the price of the 478 plus a 15% contingency. So, this article I'm recommending would read something similar to, will the town vote to appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds an amount of up to 550,160 for the purpose of replacing the clear story windows and completing other work related to this project at Hingham High School? So, everybody's well aware of the project. So, it would, that's.
I wanna mention the work that was done on the roof and the structures and.
Yes, so we evaluated, we did evaluate, you know, Habib was there. They evaluated the roof. They, and the roof was not damaged. They found no need to do any roof restoration. Of course, the knee wall has to be corrected, you know, and some mortar and some, you know, repointing or maybe some bricks replaced or stuff like that. That's included in this bid, but the roof was in good shape. So, with the roof being in good shape and no work there, the project did not extend to the air handlers that, there's two air handlers that are adjacent. So, what we're looking at is a project to replace the windows with cow wall and to fix the knee wall.
Questions or comments on that?
I'm supposed, I'm very happy with the pricing. Because the 600,000 to a million was like, oh, but it's on below that range. That's really good news. So.
So, that, you know, so that's, if, if everybody's happy with that, you know, you could, you know, you could vote me to like make sure, or, or we could do the votes next week. I'm not sure if you're voting today or tomorrow on the, on the warrants or telling me to pursue this, you know, submit this warrant for us, you know, whether we do that today or Friday or next week.
I think you can submit this one.
Okay.
As is, yes, must, okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the draft warrant article for the clear story windows in the high school gymnasium with an amount of up to 550,160 for the purpose of replacing the clear story windows and completing the other work related to the project at Hingham High School as drafted by John Ferris and with confirmation by legal counsel, I guess would be that only.
Okay.
Contingency.
Ed, second?
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Great, all in favor or any discussion?
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, so now the, the next.
Six five?
Yep.
Okay, didn't mean to jump ahead. I'm sorry. Okay. So, now the, we need a motion. I'm looking for, this one isn't, has, does not have to do a warrant article, but it actually has to do with a motion to allow the clear story window project to be awarded to GW, GVW Inc. of East Boston in the amount of 478,400, subject to town meeting approval, you know, of such funds as of April 2019 town meeting. Because we don't have the money yet. We, we, we wanna let them know you have this project, but the voters are gonna have to give the final approval in April. Okay, cause we don't have the funding for it now. So, that's, I'm recommending that motion. And maybe, I'm gonna just not, there's a second piece of that. This project has a timing issue that's associated with it, okay? Whereas if, if we don't get the final vote from the, from the voters at town meeting till April, if the company that won this job is about to get, has to do shop drawings to design these windows and to get these windows shop drawn, specked out so they can get to the vendor, so the vendor has their six weeks of lead time or eight weeks of lead time to get the windows there. And then, of course, they have to be wrecked out and they wanna be put in during the summertime. There's not adequate time to do that if we start this process at the end of April. Okay, so there's sort of two, two motions that I'm asking for here. One is to make this vote of 478,400, subject to town meeting approval. And then I'm gonna ask for a second vote here, which says to authorize me to enter into a contract for up to $30,000 using the field revolving account as a security with this vendor so that they can commence with shop drawings and have all the documents all set so that, you know, when we get the money in April, they can actually be submitted and we don't have any, you know, sort of a period where we're gonna lose several weeks between town meeting and actually getting this project sort of started so that we can get the project completed by the end of August. Okay, and the likelihood, you know, the $30,000, the security, I may have to pay it. Maybe I don't have to pay it, but it's included in that 478. But it's just, it's just the fact that I need a source of funds to enter into a contract so that I can get them started before the voters finally voted in April. So, that's, so there's two motions here and, and did I, was that clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, my only risk is that if we didn't get through it by town meeting.
Right.
You'd lose the 30,000.
Right, but we need the shop drawings anyways and those will be reviewed by Habib and Associates anyways, who's our designer. So, I presume that they're gonna be, they'll be pretty similar, you know?
Wanna make a motion?
I would, I would move toward the clear story window project at Hingham High School to GWV Inc. of East Boston in the amount of 478,400, subject to town meeting approval of such funds at the April 2019 town meeting.
Second? I'll second. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Ed. Do you wanna make the next motion as well?
I'd make a second motion to authorize the director of business and support services to enter into a contract with GWV Inc. of up to $30,000 to be secured with field revolving account balance until article funding becomes available to commence with shop drawing work associated with the Hingham High School clear story window project.
I'll second.
Carlos, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Great work on that, getting. Oh, we did 6.6. We skipped ahead. Oh, we got one more. Item six. There is. Yes, so 6.7 to discuss the warrant article for entering into.
Six point.
No, that's right.
Six point, 6.7. No, 6.7.
6.7, yes, sorry. I was just, all right, so warrant article for entering into leases of school buses and vans and act as appropriate.
Right, okay, so the, so the administration, we can enter into legally from the procurement laws, we can enter into contracts for like three years, okay? The thing is when we purchase tram, when we, when we buy leased buses or, you know, and, and in this year's budget, I'll have a proposal for you to actually lease some special education vans as well, so we can take over a few routes. You know, the, by law, we can only do three years. However, through asking the town to give us approval for entering into a lease for up to five years, that's called a majority vote approval and the town can give us that majority vote approval at a meeting. And so, I'm asking for a warrant article here to allow me to enter into a contract to lease big yellow buses and special education vans for a period of five years. So that the, the benefit of a five-year lease, in my view, is that these big yellow buses, like for, if, I just entered it to a three-year for a new one for Metco run and that came to about 14.7 a year. The 22 that I did the previous couple of years were 10.7 a year. So, by leasing the buses for a longer period of time, our operating cost is actually reduced and for a big yellow bus, it's probably around $4,000. And I think the, and, and the thing is between three years and a five-year on a bus, right? The bus is gonna go for probably eight, 10, you know, 15 years. And even for five years, they're gonna stay in fairly good shape for us. They're gonna be, you know, operable. They're gonna be in good shape. Maintenance costs are gonna be low. We'll likely do oil changes, filter changes, and before we return that bus, we'll have to put a new pair of tires on and, you know, a brake job. We'd have to do that same thing for three years, you know, it comes down to it, because, you know, the, and the third year, they're sort of worn down. So, you'd be giving them a brand-new bus back with new brakes and new tires. So, and, so the asset has not come near its useful life and therefore, I think it makes sense to extend them out for a couple of years to five years if, if I'm allowed to enter into those leases, so that we lower the operating costs on an annual basis and the maintenance costs still stay low. We don't see a big jump in maintenance cost. And this year coming up, and we'll talk about this Thursday at the budget meeting, so there's a couple of proposals that will be in the budget. One is we're, I wanna take on, we're gonna take on a new bus so that we can do the secondary Metco run, okay? That one there, we've, we've done the elementary this year. It's been successful, you know, Patrick at the. been successful. You know, Patrick at the driver, we've been, the service level is really good. And, you know, and frankly, because the service level has been so good and because we have control on it, I've been hammered saying, you know, can't we take this? Can't we do the secondary? Can we do it? And so much so that I've actually taken that run on. We've canceled, we've gone through Metco and said, in forty-five days, we'll take over that run. So I did manage the lease of used bus from DAtco, you know, at a cost of six, seven thousand dollars. I didn't bring that to you because that's something that I can just flow within the operation. So we are going to start doing the secondary runs for Metco, you know, effective somewhere around February fourth. So now we'll do, we'll be doing our full runs for Hingham, and we'll also be taking Cohasset with us as well, who will contribute sort of the current day rate to us. And I think it'll benefit both organizations, both school systems really, because in future years, those rates won't go up. And then service will be better. We've had some, you know, service issues with first student, and I think that's what created the frustration where they really, I mean, they started pushing me in October. Can't you do it? And I don't know. I got to do a budget. So in the budget, I'm asking, I'll be requesting that I enter into a five-year lease for one new bus anyways. Okay? The new secondary Metco bus. This isn't to replace our fleet. But I'll also be requesting, in one of the proposals, there's, the request is really to, you know, take over three special education routes by leasing small minivans instead of the, the big vans, because we can take those and we can take some costly runs, move them into Patrick's shop, our own shop, and, you know, save several thousands of dollars too, plus have the vans available. So better economics for gas runs and stuff like that. And I, in the same light, I could do a three-year lease, but then I'm giving back a good vehicle after three years. And, you know, I do that with copies. It drives me crazy, but I just think that five years would be more appropriate. So all this we'd do is basically have the taxpayers or the, the voters say, yes, you can enter into a five-year lease. And we'd do it very economically. And if, if five-year wasn't good, if three-year were cheaper, I would enter into the best lease, I think, is appropriate for the town.
So one of my questions was, we had talked about when we initially did the leases for three years, that then we would think about staggering the fleet so that we weren't turning over the entire fleet at one time. So with allowing the five-year, so that gives, you can then lease up to five years. So there's the chance, like, we could begin that staggering. We don't have to do the whole fleet at once at five years.
Yeah, well, that would be, you know, that would be, next year, I'll have to think about that for the year after. Because twenty doesn't, twenty, I think, is our fourth year. Twenty will be our fourth year. So in our fifth year, that's when I'll have to, you know, we will, in twenty-one, I believe, we'll be completing our fifth year.
So the ones we have now that are three-year lease, would we?
Yeah. No, they're five.
Are the ones we have now?
Yeah, we got a majority vote approval for those. So we're in a five-year lease now. And that's where we have this, we have the, so, okay.
So then what are we, do we have to have this warrant article just because of the additional vehicles?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to answer, I want to buy this, basically, essentially lease this bus, which is a per, it's a sort of a purchase lease. But I'd like to do it over five years, so our rates are lower.
Okay. So this really only applies to the new ones?
This is for the one bus and the three vans. Really, that's what I'm thinking about here. Yeah. No. The whole fleet will be, that will be something we discuss next year for the twenty-one budget.
Okay.
Because I think twenty-one will end it. And then we'll have to, I'll have to have the approval before I go into another lease. So.
So the twenty-two buses that we have right now, who owns them?
It's a purchase lease. Carlos, it's a five-year lease. We give them back. We have a right to buy them at the end for any one or all at a cost of around something like thirty-five, seven. You know, so, and, and the buses are being in good shape and they've been very good operating. So I don't know, sitting here today, that, you know, in a year or two, I might say, hey, listen, you know, we should probably purchase another three of these buses or four of these buses at a hundred and five thousand dollars, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then we can drop some from, you know, we, we won't have to lease them all. You know, and they may be good ones for, you know, athletic runs and doing, doing other things that are really economical, that bring our overall costs down. I'm not trying to build fleet and increase our expenses, not by any means whatsoever. I'm only doing these things because I think they're more economical and they're more cost-effective for the town, you know? Not trying to build an empire. But Patrick has the capability and the wherewithal to do it, and I think we might as well use that skill.
Any other questions on that?
Do we need to put numbers in the line?
Like dollar figure numbers or number of leases, like?
That or, yeah, how many buses are we talking about? How many minivans?
Not for this one. This was a direct copy from the previous, the, the last majority vote approval we did. So I think it's better if we keep it sort of open-ended.
We probably have that detail of explaining why we're asking.
Any other questions on that? No? Do you want to take a motion to approve this one as written? Thank you, Carrie. All right. So sorry, your motion is to, to approve the proposed warrant article. Will the town authorize the school department to enter into the leases of up to five years for the purpose of leasing school buses and special education vans used for regular and special education transportation or to act on anything related thereto? To a second. Ed, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We, all right, six point eight is to receive an update on the superintendent's search process. We have site, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Absolutely. Sorry, Ray, I didn't notice you there. No, 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 no problem at all.
Just a quick question on the foster articles. You did not take a vote tonight. Are you planning to take it up again at one of your budget sessions? Because you don't have another...
Yes, sorry. That was right before you came in. Yes, we have a...
Sorry.
Yep. Nope, that's okay. We are, because we, we discussed that before you came in.
Great.
On the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth.
Oh, great.
All right.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ray. Thanks for your help. Okay, six point eight to receive an update on the superintendent's search. So we have our three finalists, Dr. LaBillaud, Dr. Austin, and Dr. Metzler, and we are conducting the site visits for all three this week. Dr. LaBillaud tomorrow, Dr. Metzler on Wednesday, and Dr. Austin on Friday. So we have site teams going up, made up of school committee members, building principals, leadership, department head, and teacher. And we'll be meeting with various stakeholders at all of the, at all of the site visits. So going to tour buildings, the principals will talk to principals, the teacher will be talking to their association, department heads will be there, leadership team will be there. So they should be very jam-packed agendas for those site visits. But they are very important to the process. And we've got representatives from the school committees going to all of them. So everybody knows schedules and where to be and who's driving and all that. And then the next step will be to, after we conduct those site visits and we've wrapped up all of our reference checking, so anybody who's checking references, we should try to get those done by, I would like to have, I'd like to have them all done by the end of this week. So that by, when we're, when the site visits are concluded, we'll have concluded all the reference checkings too. So we probably, if we can, schedule a meeting to deliberate and having a, a meeting to deliberate after the site visits. Is that, are people available the week of the fourteenth, other than the seventeenth, which is the budget meeting? So nothing on the seventeenth?
How long, how long is the meeting?
To deliberate? I don't know. I guess it will depend on how the site visits go. I mean, I think I'm, I don't know. I mean, I'm guessing it will be a couple of hours?
Tuesday's an ATF meeting.
Tuesday's an ATF.
Are we working next week?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm just, I'm going.
No, you're doing minutes and then you're going to take a break and check your calendar.
Meeting on the seventeenth at seven PM. Right?
I don't want to do it that day.
Okay.
Just because I think that's, I don't want to, we don't need, we don't want to have a time limit. Right? So.
Right now, I am available all nights with exception of the eighteenth and seventeenth. Seventeenth, I'll be here.
You'll be here. All right. So, and then Tuesdays and, how about Monday or, how about Wednesday? Let's start there. How does Wednesday, the sixteenth, look for people?
Yeah.
Yes. Carrie, you good with that?
Yeah.
So Wednesday, the sixteenth, that's a good date. All right.
What time?
All right. Seven o'clock?
Um.
Sorry, just checking one thing.
Do you anticipate making a decision on that?
Yes.
And voting.
And voting. Yes.
Right now, seven thirty would be better for me, but I could try for seven.
Seven thirty is okay for me if it's not too late for other people. Seven thirty works a little better for me. I can stay within the speed limit.
Sometimes it revolves, right?
What did you say?
It all depends on when it ends.
Oh, yes, I know. Yeah, that's a good point. So seven thirty? All right. So seven thirty, Wednesday, the sixteenth. And we'll have it here. Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. Okay. I can't think of anything else on the superintendent's search update unless anyone else can. Okay. All right. Great. Oh, I'm so sorry, Carol. Yes. Sorry. Can you come up to the?
Carol Falvey, Seven Isaac Sprig Drive. Turning your attention to the December twentieth meeting. You are all reviewing the evaluations or forms. Will those be available to the public?
They are public records? So, yeah, so they definitely are.
And what would be the time and place to review those?
If, so, I guess where, whenever and wherever someone would like to review them. I do need to confirm with NESDEC if the school committee is to hold them. I feel like, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate for them to be held here at the central office. So I think the school committee has to hold them, but I will have to confirm that with NESDEC. But if...
I'll be in touch with you.
Okay. Great.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Sure. Josh, yes?
Joshua Russ, one twenty-five, Wampe Tuck. Have you guys decided on a process, final process yet on how this is going to work for your decision?
Do you mean like?
Like, how are you deciding?
So it will be a deliberation. So a discussion of the candidates and I think really discussing the candidates that you, like, discussing the candidate that you are leaning towards, right? And discussing the attributes of the candidates that you want, that you feel best meet the candidate profile. So that, I think, is the key to this final decision is confirming, like, all the candidates are qualified, right? So now it's who fits the profile the best and who do, have we felt in our meetings with them and all the different feedback, reference checkings, site visits, the public interviews, our private, you know, our public days with the candidates. So, so we now have to take all that information we've been taking in that has been different than what the public has taken, right? Everybody's sort of had their piece of it, but we've been, we've had it, had it all to look through. So we'll discuss the candidates that we are, I don't want to say have decided, but like who you're leaning towards at the meeting, and then see if we feel, as we're discussing, are, is there some consensus as to a top finalist or two top finalists? And then if there is, then maybe kind of narrow that down and then make a decision. And it would be a vote. We could, it doesn't have to be unanimous, but I think we'd like to get to consensus across the board. So I think it's a little bit just sort of, depends on how the conversations go.
Goes.
Yeah, exactly. NESDEC will be at the meeting and they will provide some direction for us that evening, particularly to, you know, is there at some point that do you just have to say, okay, we have to stop to, like, we just, we got to say, you know, you just have to, you have to vote. You have to put it to a vote and see how it goes. And so my thought would be that if it was, if, you know, if some, if one of the candidates was, if there were four people, four, and three people for a different candidate, maybe you talk it through one more time and see if anyone, you know, as they're deliberating, if they change their minds. Maybe it's a, if it's three to three, maybe I get to vote last. And, or, you know what I mean? And then say, okay, let's keep talking. And if, you know, clearly, we're, we're not at consensus yet, so let's keep talking. So it'll be a little bit played by here.
Okay. I just want to set expectations.
Yes. Exactly. Does that help? Is that clarified?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I'm thinking anyway.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Michelle, will you have an open, posted meeting?
Open, posted meeting. Yes. We probably will not take public comment at that meeting, however, because I think we've had, I don't know, I was about to say we've had enough public comment. That's not what I mean. But we've taken in all, we have, you know, we have all the information that we need, I think, at this, well, after the site visits, we will have all the information we need to make our decision. So we would.
On that note?
Yes.
Are we going to hear from the, you know, from the group that visited the candidates to, you know, together?
Yes. So we will have some reporting from the site visits. I think it will be, I think, I think it'll be, we'll have written up sort of the takeaways from the site visits. So a little debriefing with the team that goes, it gets a little tricky, right? Because the school committee members can't really sort of opine on that because we want to avoid deliberating before it. So, but I think we'll get the opinions of the teacher, leadership team that comes to the visits and get their feedback, either verbally or complete a, they can complete a form to write down their observations.
All right. Thank you.
So.
We shared the same forms that the screening committee used.
Well, and you guys all got that strengths, weaknesses comments, and then the checklist of the candidate profile. That was all shared with the staff.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions on the search? All right. Thank you. All right. Six point nine, to receive notification of the late-night field trip of grade seven and eight drama club and junior choral spectrum to see King Kong on Broadway in New York City, May eighteenth, twenty nineteen. We don't approve that, right? That's just a notification. And then we have a few appointments, to receive notification of the appointments of parent educators Amanda Mendez at Foster School, Frank Paterino at Hingham Middle School, and Carolyn McDonald at South School, and of kids and action teacher Christina Zaniti. So welcome and congratulations to those appointments. And then we are saying goodbye to receiving the notification of Jerome Ford, who was a parent educator at Hingham High School. So thank you, Mr. Ford, for your work at, for the Hingham Public Schools. Item seven, any forty-eight hour items to address, Don, do you have? Nobody? All right. That sounds good. Subcommittee and project reports. Long-range planning, I think we took all your information. Anything on?
I was just, we are, you know, looking at the capital budget. We started with the number. We have sort of like one, two, nine, 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 we have two eyes. And hopefully we'll have our budget present today, so we can be on the seventeenth.
Yeah. Well, we want to make sure that you have the cap.
Yeah, we wanna make sure that you have the capital, because we even have the capital on the twenty-third. So we wanted to present to the school committee first, obviously, then we'll be presenting that to the capital on the twenty-third.
Okay.
And also, Michelle, just wanna mention that we have a new requirement from the Hingham Journal.
Dear Emmy, um...
Hello.
McKibum.
McKibum, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, welcome, thank you. We love the press. Um, all right, thank you, Carlos. And, you know, I apologize, it just reminded me, the, um, Dr. Gallo and I will be setting the presentation of the budget to, um, AdCom, um, and I'll let folks know the date. You don't have to be there, but I'll let you know the date. I think it's, or, we haven't firmed it up yet, but it's like early February.
Is this a Sunday meeting? I'm sorry, I have a cash...
No, but there is a Sunday meeting. I did send that calendar out to everybody today, just to remind you. So that Sunday meeting is January twenty-seventh. Um, we haven't set a time yet, so...
So, I'm sorry, what were you talking about?
So, I'm sorry, I'm talking about there's a presentation, um, the school budget gets presented to AdCom, um, and at one of their meetings. And it's, and selectmen, sorry, it's a joint meeting of selectmen and AdCom.
Right.
And typically, Dr. Gallo goes and the chair, yes?
We all go, the chair, the vice chair, Dr. Gallo sit at the table.
And is the date set?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. It is not set.
Okay.
But I believe...
Early February.
We're leading for February fifth.
We have to get that from the selectmen, but I think it's something like the sixth or something.
They asked, they sent, they sent me two dates.
It's a Thursday, right? A Tuesday or Thursday typically is what they're...
Yes, I sent the dates to DOT today that they're requesting, so I'll circle back with DOT tomorrow to...
And we'll put that on the calendar, you know, we have a, the budget calendar, which has all those dates, so.
Okay.
There's a TBD on it right now, but, so.
All right.
But typically, early February.
All right, perfect, so as soon as I have that date, I will get it on everybody's calendar. All right, um... Do you, let's, I'm gonna go, I'm, okay, I'll let you go last, because you wanna talk about your memo? All right, so do you have anything for salary negotiation?
Um, just to report out, we met as a subcommittee on Friday, January fourth, and, um, we got comments from our legal counsel about the superintendent contract. And so we went through the, for updating it to current. Um, so we started going through those comments and, um, now I'll go back to him based on those comments. So it's very practical issues, it's not, we didn't talk about salary range or benefits to offer, anything like that. It was just the structure of the contract and as it relates to current laws, because there were some updates, um, on that. So we were just sorting through those details, so we will get that to everybody as we close in on having to negotiate something. We did start, have begun that process.
All right, great, thank you. Um, Ed, did you wanna comment on the warrants that you signed? Or do you?
Nothing unusual, just the same old, uh, expensive, uh, three hundred thousand dollars here and five hundred thousand dollars there.
All right, a copy of that. It's a little more detail than that in the report, but they're in the packets if anyone has questions. So the warrants are in the package if anyone has, has a question on that.
They're an eye-opener, it's, you sit there and it's, it's, they're very similar, they're very repetitive, and it's just realized.
It's all department bills, you know, it's like, so, yeah, the, but there's a, and, yep, every week it's, you know, it could be anywhere between a hundred thousand or three hundred and forty thousand, depending on how it gets paid, you know, so.
Thank you.
Some big ones.
Yes. Um, special subcommittee meeting, uh, update. Um, we are not meeting this month, but I'm gonna, going to attend the CPAC meeting, which is this Wednesday night. Um, and I believe Dr. Viness is giving an update at the, um, CPAC meeting on the evaluation. Um, and then I can bring some of that back to the next meeting, but then I think at the next meeting, we'll have it on the agenda um, for a, just a, at least a brief overview of the report for the full school committee at the next...
On the seventeenth?
On the sev-, no, on the, the twenty-second. Not at the budget meeting. The CPAC meeting is Wednesday, January ninth, is that this Wednesday? And then, and then, so I can bring back an update and I think it was, I was going to ask for it to be on the agenda for the January twenty-second meeting for the full school committee, not at the budget meeting. So, okay.
For January, I'm sorry?
January twenty-second meeting, which is our next full school committee meeting. Um, any liaison reports?
Just, uh, I attended the Hingham High School, uh, council, uh, meeting and, um, Mrs. Billy gave a presentation on, uh, the, um, Bayano, Bayan, Bayano Youth Risk Behavior Survey. They're getting ready to go out, so, uh, you know, people should be aware of that.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, nothing, anything else? Any other liaison reports? No? All right. Well, with that, item number nine, I will take a motion to adjourn.
No, no, you can leave my update.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
See, what happens when I skip over you? I'm sorry, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn. I'll take a motion to your case report, no, sir.
So I did, actually I have, um, before we get, so policy is not meeting anytime soon unless we have policy issues to address, because we just have so many meetings. I know in the past, policy's been updating the policy manual and we've kind of not pursued that this year. So, um, we aren't meeting as often, but if you do have issues that you might hear of, please bring them to my attention. I did wanna discuss, because I know that we have contracts that are, which kinda goes back to salary negotiations that are up this year, whether we can look at staggering and if so, would a policy be needed for this? Or how could we, you know, just to look at leadership contracts and when they expire? Is this something?
I think we should, we can address that. I'm thinking we're gonna have an executive session to talk about contract negotiations for, um, any non-union leadership, so we can address that during that time.
Okay, so I'll leave that in your court and not take it up for now in policy.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just kind of an update on the minutes. I have been, um, trying to catch up as we did tonight. Carlos, I believe you have a set of minutes from December third.
So, I should be ready for the twenty-second, I believe?
That's fine, okay, and then...
She...
Libby's all cut up, and then the only set that I have, um, from two thousand and eighteen would be November nineteenth.
Okay.
And I believe we should write minutes for the interviews, although it's, because that was a full school committee meeting. Just to be officially correct.
We can get the template from Nezdeck of how to write those minutes.
Just so that it's, um, somewhere documented, that was a school committee meeting and interviews were conducted.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, community outreach, I wrote you each a memo and I hope you all had time to read it. It's really nothing new, because Libby had tried to address this issue at the December third meeting, which I couldn't attend, 'cause I was sick. I did watch it from home, which was kinda nice. Um, but basically, this is just a summary of what community outreach has discussed over many, many different meetings, especially in our last meeting for number twenty-seventh. And since there were some, um, suggestions made by the subcommittee as well as some questions that are still open, we've decided that we need to bring this to the full school committee. I don't know if you want me to read it or if anyone has questions about what I wrote here. So basically, I just tried to, um, put in writing, really, a social media agreement for school committee members. And the agreement is basically how we wanna project ourselves as a full school committee. And Libby did go over this with you during the December third meeting, but I felt that there was some discussion, but no one really made any, there was no real consensus whether you're in agreement with what the community outreach subcommittee proposed. So that's why I put it in writing, so it's quite clear what the community outreach subcommittee is proposing. Do you agree with what we're proposing? And then there is one question left open, but I guess I wanna find out first, if you, if you read the first half, it's, we're making proposals and is, anyone have any questions to what I proposed? Or do you want me to read it out loud for the public? I'm happy to do that, too.
Just read the one paragraph with the, the one that starts in order to achieve this.
Well, I don't know if that's then clear if the, I'll just, do you want me to?
You go ahead and read it.
Okay, so that the...
Or summary.
Yeah, so...
I'll try and, it's just probably easier if I read it. So, dear colleagues, the topic of social media use among school committee members was discussed at the December third, two thousand and eighteen school committee's meeting. Unfortunately, I was absent due to illness. The community outreach subcommittee has been discussing this topic for quite some time now. I'm writing you this memo as a follow-up from our last community outreach subcommittee meeting on November twenty-seventh. The important question the community outreach subcommittee asks itself is how does the school committee want to present itself on social media? It was agreed that the school committee should have one front and consistency with its messaging. In order to achieve this, it was proposed that there be one spokesperson for the entire board. It was suggested that the spokesperson be the elected chair of the school committee, in this case, Michelle Eyre. Secondly, it was recommended that all posts from the Hingham School Committee continue to be made to the Hingham Public Schools Facebook page and not on a separate new page. Lastly, any discussions, comments on school issues that may arise on social media would also be handled by the official spokesperson, AKA Michelle Eyre. Discussions continued about what content should be posted to social media. Information that the committee desires to post should be agreed upon by the full school committee or at least by the subcommittee from which the information arises. Any agreed upon posts should be sent to the chair of community outreach to post to Hingham Public Schools Facebook page and send a copy to the chair, Michelle Eyre. It was agreed that all seven members could continue to post to their individual page as well as their own school committee page. So, are there any questions with that part of it?
No questions, no.
So, besides agreeing as a board to the community outreach proposal above, one question still needs to be discussed and decided. Do we as a board want to share posts to other groups on Facebook, such as Pinboard, Pinboard two point zero, CPAC, Friends of Hingham, et cetera? If yes, who should be authorized to share, individuals or just the chair? As we advance further into the technological world, I think we can agree that social media is here to stay. However, keeping our goal in mind of one front and message consistency, we need to agree as a board how we want to use this tool so that it is a useful one. It is in the best interest of all seven members to come to a mutual agreement. An official social media agreement is not only respectable and professional, but it also allows us to serve our constituents in the best way possible. So, we post to the Hingham Public Schools page and that content that we post to the Hingham Public Schools page is either agreed as a full school committee or it may stem from the subcommittee. So, for example, we just recently posted an update on the superintendent search and that was done just by Liza and myself with consent from the full school committee. And, um, for example, there was an article written about the CPC grant. I didn't need permission from the full school committee, because the subcommittee agreed that that could be posted to social media. And we're doing all of this posts on the Hingham Public Schools page. So I guess my question and also the community outreach's question is, do we want to drive our viewers to the Hingham Public Schools page, and that's where they receive their information? Or do the school committee members here feel that it's necessary that we share to all these different groups that exist out there? My problem with doing that is, how do you know about all the different groups that exist out there? You might post to one or two, you might forget one. You know, what, how do we wanna present ourselves? And then the question is, if we wanna do that, who does that? Because you might have Carlos sharing a post, but Liza might wanna share the post or I might wanna share the post. So it, it gives kinda, it doesn't give a consistent message on how we are delivering our information. But if, I think if we say, well, this is our spokesperson, if you have questions on social media, then there's always that one person that you refer to, and that would be our chair, who's elected by us. So this is where I'm trying to find, can we agree on this? And how do we wanna pursue in the future when it comes to sharing information? Do we wanna drive our audience to the Hingham Public Schools page? Or do we find that it's necessary to share to the fourteen, fifteen groups that exist out there?
So, my opinion on that, I don't know if you wanna go in order, start with...
Go ahead.
And I said before, and I'll say again, we are elected by voters. And if the chairperson already said that she's not very involved in social media, so she may not have the time to go there to share something. Now, she could actually designate someone. And I have no problem with the chair of the outreach community or, or any other chair posting it. But if I find that it's, that it's something important, then it should be, uh, just, you know, distributed to the community. Uh, nothing should prevent me from sharing. Now, what we have suggested, and many agree, is that as we share, we turn off comments. So that way, I'm not looking for people to give me feedback on that comment. I think it is clear the message there, and we actually brought that out, that we will have a disclosure there, that anyone with comments should email the chair and her email is there on the, on the, that communication. So I have no problem with that. I mean, the more people that knows that something is taking place, like, right, for, for example, um, you, you posted on the, um, Hingham Public Schools, the finalists, the three finalists. And things are moving really, really fast, right? Not a lot of people have access there, so there is really not a way of driving people there if they don't wanna be part of it, right? They have to, you know, solicit, you know, to, to be there, or either that, uh, or you send a mass email to everyone saying, look, we have this, this is why we're gonna post the communication. That's not gonna work. So, I have no problem at all, and I think some people in the room doesn't have a problem with us, all of us, being free to share. Dr. Ed perhaps may not share anything, 'cause I don't think he uses social media. I'm not speaking for him, but just perhaps. But the thing is, you know, the more people that we, we, sorry. The more people we let, uh, know that things are taking place, the better. And, you know, I think I've been very effective with my posts, turning off comments, because people are getting the information.
I'm a, I'm a bad person to ask. Carrie?
I would, I would agree with that, too. If it's, if it's on the Hingham Public Schools site and you're just sharing it and especially turning off comments, it's, it's another way to get the information out there. And I don't think only posting to that one page really drives traffic there. It just, it kinda gets buried, because there are only a thousand people or so that follow it. And, you know, and it just moves quickly, it gets buried in people's news feeds. So, I mean, I think it's important, I mean, I think we all did discuss it and discussed that Michelle was gonna be the point person, whether social media or not. So I thought we all agreed on that, anyway. But, I mean, sharing something to Hingham Pinboard or whatever, information that's going on that we've all vetted and agreed on, it seems like it would be a good idea.
Right.
I, uh, I'm, uh, I don't think that just because social media exists, we should use social media in all of its forms. I think we need to be extremely, extremely cautious and careful and selective about how we use it. I think that it is a quagmire of, um, bad behavior. And it can be used for good, but you can't control it. And the bad can take over in such a way that, um, isn't worth the risk. And I think that we, as a board, need to maintain a very, very professional face, front, attitude, and that Facebook and social media in general invite, um, unprofessional mannerisms. and that Facebook and social media in general invite unprofessional mannerisms. And I just don't want to open up that Pandora's box. If anybody has seen the movie The Birdcage, there was an excellent commentary about it. I saw the movie, I didn't understand it at all. But then I read this commentary, and it was just an opinion about what it stands for, because anybody's going to take, have their own take on it. But this one was that the monsters were the trolls on social media, and that they are out to get you. And.
I don't want to say spoiler alert at any moment. Everybody hasn't seen the movie yet.
No, and that's, I mean, the monsters could be anything you make of them. That was just one take. And, you know, it was just sort of an interesting commentary on social media in general. And I personally have always thought that if, social media, Facebook, whatever, when you read comments, 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 you get the social, what Young referred to as the social unconscious. And that is a very, very murky place to be, and I don't want us to go there. I just think it's necessary or appropriate.
The thing is, the school department's already on Facebook. We have a page, and all the content is already out there. So, sharing something that's already there, particularly if you turn off comments.
But sharing, you're talking about sharing it onto other pages where other people are that don't necessarily have the school's best interest. Like, we need to just sort of keep it to a very controlled situation.
But if it's shared and turns out, and the, like Carlos has been doing it, and turning off comments, doesn't that?
Well, and that, well, then that goes back to Kay's point about how that's not, that's not us as a committee, that's Carlos. Whereas if it, Michelle, if the Chairperson does it, then that's the committee doing it. So, what, so, you know, do, so that goes back to the question of, you know, do we want individuals to be able to spread news willy-nilly? Or do we just want to have a united front where one person, the Chair, shares the news?
So, let me clear that up a little bit. I'm elected by the voters. I have a duty to inform the voters that things are taking place. If there is a news there from the schools, and the people are not knowing that they're happening, and I wanted to inform them, it's my freedom of speech to do that.
You can post it to your individual.
That's what, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That I should have the right to post.
To your individual page.
I should have the right to post in my individual page, and I should have the right to share that on the venues where I think people sees it. Now, you made a very good point, that we have to be extra careful in not distributing items to sites where they don't have any interest in Hingham. I don't think that's the case here, because I have been sharing, I'm talking about myself, on sites that people in Hingham would like to see. And that is why they like a post or not. Now, when you turn off commenting, you're not inviting anybody to say anything positive or negative, okay? Because I'm just sharing that information. So, there's nothing there.
Okay, but Carlos, I think the question really is, do we as a board want to be sharing? And if the board tonight says yes, because there's mixed opinions, so, but if the general consensus is, let's, let's share, because we want to get the information out there, fine. But then I think we need to have the spokesperson do it. It's about the messaging, it's about having one front. The spokesperson is speaking for the school committee. And if the spokesperson feels, now, you can say, you know, Michelle, I really think that we need to share in these groups, you know, and we can decide on which groups we want to share in. That's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that if we can agree as a board. What I'm trying to prevent is individuals acting individually, but in the name of the entire board. And I think it just is a professional way to deal with social media. We're all learning this kind of new landscape on how to deal with it. And this is just, how can we use it in the most professional manner? And I think it's, you know, when people ask me, well, who's the spokesperson? And it's the Chair. I, you could say, okay, maybe Community Outreach should do it. Not that I want that job, I don't want that job, and I think you don't want that job. But I think we need to just come on an agreement on the process, just so that we have, we come, we have an agreement. I think that's just, we respect each other. Yes, you have the freedom to do whatever you want, but it's just basically out of respect in how we want to present ourselves as a board. It has nothing to do with individual freedoms.
You know, and I understand, if I'm making a comment on top of what the message is, I'm changing, perhaps, the message. I'm not just sharing anymore, now I'm making a comment. What I have been proposing is that I should have the freedom to share whatever communications put out there.
Sure, but the problem is if you share, Carrie shares, Liza shares. Yeah, but then you're sharing the same thing, and it looks like spam. It doesn't come across as professional. So, I'm trying to avoid that appearance. And we have the spokesperson, in the name of the board, share the information that we as a board agreed upon. I don't know why this is so, I mean, I honestly, I don't want to share to group, but I am fine to do that if that's the consensus of this board. I just want to do it in a professional way.
So, we had discussed having the mask trainer come in and do a social media training for all of us as a workshop, perhaps in February. Could we maybe table this until she comes in?
I don't want to table it, because we have members doing things, and I want to just come to an agreement, and we can change our agreement at any time. But I think we need to just have a general consensus on how we want to proceed forward as a board.
So, I think that we do, I think the training is definitely a good idea. And then they can provide us some guidance. Do you mind following up with them about coming in? Okay, thank you. I mean, I would say, for now, I would, I lean towards, I don't, I'm okay with posts being shared as long as the comments are disabled, because that's the only thing, if it's in 28 places, you don't know where it is, and you don't know what people are saying. And if somebody takes it and shares it someplace else, at least it's taken one of the committee members off of it. And then, I think there's only two, two other, two things happening here. But I, so I think for now, if we, if that is what the agreement is for the time being, until we get the mask social media person in here to give us some direction on it. Sorry, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I'm the PTO president over at South, and I just want to say, I, as a president of PTO, I rely on those shares, to be able to share that with my PTO page. It's very, I use it as a resource.
So, there's nothing preventing you from taking it from the Hingham Public Schools page and sharing it to South?
It's about school committee members, how the school committee members.
So, we, so I just want to, so we would still, I would still be able to share your posts?
Yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Anyone can share any post.
Well, when you were talking about not sharing.
It's about the school, so when I share, it shows my face, my name, and it looks like I'm the spokesperson for the school committee. It has that appearance. So, I'm trying to have us, have a consistent appearance on social media.
I, no, I understand that, I just want to make sure that we would still.
You could share anything you.
Once we post it, we.
This has nothing to do with the public.
The ability to still share those posts will still be available to us.
Yes, yes, yes.
Absolutely, yes, yes, thank you. Yeah, this is just, that's how we're sharing.
Yes, and we would hope that you would. Yeah, we hope that 100 people will share our posts to their individual pages, to get the word out there. It's about how the school committee presents itself.
Yep.
I'm just curious how, we've heard some people talk about this, it's a really interesting subject. But I haven't heard Ed or Liza kind of weigh in on it before you make a decision.
Oh, yeah, no, I wasn't moving towards a decision, I was just.
It seemed like you were getting to a, making a short-term decision, and it would be great to hear from all of you all.
Oh, yeah, no, I was simply suggesting that as one of the short-term decisions. If Ed and Liza would like to speak, they know how to be recognized, so, you guys. Ed, do you, do you want to go first, if you have any comments?
Thank you, Carol.
Speak. You don't have anything?
No, of course, you have to have a comment. I guess my comment is, I'm in no position to vote one way or the other, because truthfully, this is just a whole topic and a subject that I've avoided, and I'm very happy to avoid it, and it works real well. I just went on my phone here to give you some idea of how many of these things I've received and I've ignored, and I don't, I thought I said something like 478. I just, I, it's, I'm not familiar with it, I don't use that, use it, and therefore I would be voting inappropriately.
Okay, that's fair, thank you.
But it sounds like I might have to get up to speed here.
I, I do feel that it's important that we have a consistent, that the message we're giving is consistent, which I think we've done a good job at doing that, with, especially with the superintendent search process, and we've agreed to the message and had it posted. And I think that it's totally fair that we can put it on our own individual page, and on our, if people have a school committee page for election purposes and other communication I guess I, on the sharing on other pages, I mean, the other thing I think about, too, is, we're only talking about Facebook. So, when do we get to Twitter, Instagram, all the other things? And then I think with, when we're sharing to other pages, I, I think we should be discreet about where we share to, because nothing is wrong with this, but a Pinboard 2.0, the point of that page is free-for-all discussion. Whereas CPAC is, you know, that's a sort of an official page of CPAC members, of Hingham Parents and affiliated, I guess it's not only, but, and so that, I think when we're sharing out to those organizations, we should agree on who's doing it. Because it, you know, we have the freedom of posting on our own page as a means of sharing, and we all have different numbers of friends and different frequency, and so that, the, who knows what the algorithm is of how often people see that. But by nature, it might be seen more by one of us than the other. But I, I do think, and it becomes a burden, but if we're going to share out information onto other sites.
Well, could I turn that around?
Yeah.
Could we not give a heads-up to the PTO presidents and the CPAC president to share to their page?
Yeah, that's.
That would be one way of where then the official Chair or President or, or do we want it to come from the school committee?
Or if it's, so when we vote on this superintendent, you know, is that something that the Chair, we give the list of what sites we want it shared to, and then it's the Chair's role as, as our policy is, is the Chair is the spokesperson, that our distribution list includes those sites, because that is our official statement. One unfortunate thing is, or I think, is, you know, the Hingham Public Schools Facebook page needs to be a member of these sites in order to post. However, if even the person, even the member of the school committee that's writing, if they're writing, I am, I was voted by my board to post this, then it goes out. But we, if we agree to where we're going to distribute to, that, and then, you know, I think then we should have masks come in and give us the guidance and explain, you know, what are our best practices, what are other committees doing, so that we have some guidance. You know, we have a couple of, we have important information to get out in the next several months with the superintendent appointment, potentially with town meeting. We'll have to be a little careful of what we communicate due to, for political purposes. But, so, we're going to have announcements that we want news out there, but if we can agree on how it's distributed, I think that's fair. I think it is, it's great that Carlos turned off the comments, so that people weren't commenting on your sites, because that adds a whole different element to it. We don't want to get into all of that. But I, I do think when we start distributing, then that should be the Chair that's distributing.
And we would have to decide and choose very carefully which groups going to share to.
Yeah, I.
Because there's like, how many, I mean, there's like a million out there. I mean, you know, you can't share every single one.
And it doesn't prevent other people from picking up what we've posted and sharing it themselves.
Of course, no.
Yeah, but I could agree to that, because, I mean, obviously, if you have the ones in town that we really value, right?
Right.
That we want to get the message to. That's fine, I mean, we can have a list.
Right.
That's not a problem.
That's, yeah. To develop a, develop a list.
Can we please then go over that list tonight? Because otherwise, another.
Yeah, no, I think you have some already, right?
Well, it should be pretty easy.
You already said some, yeah.
Let's do that right now.
I still have one point to make.
And I do, too. Just real quick, that's why I called it a social media agreement. This would be valid towards Twitter, Instagram. If we, as a board, decided to use other platforms, I would just expect that this would also be.
And I do. LinkedIn.
So, I referred to Facebook, because we're active on Facebook, but obviously, it would be valid towards any other platforms out there.
And that, and my other point is that we are agreeing to share as a group to certain pages, which precludes us from.
Certain groups.
Groups. Which precludes us from doing anything else, school committee-related, on Facebook as individuals.
No.
Other than posting, other than posting to your own pa, like, if I'm acting as a school committee member, I can post to my own page, my own personal page and my own school committee page. But I can't use social media for any other gain as a school committee member. I can't use my position as a school committee member to do anything else on social media.
No, I would disagree.
If you're running for reelection and you want to post it to a different page.
Right. So, if you, okay, so.
But that's your own message, that, that's not.
So, that's different than.
You're not acting as the spokesperson for the board.
Right, not acting as.
So, let's say, Carrie.
I would be acting as a running member.
So, Libby, for example, let's say Carrie had an interesting article that she found regarding special ed, and she wanted to post it to the CPAC. She could still do that, because she's acting as Carrie, the school committee member, and she's, it's not an article that's coming from the entire board.
And actually, when I do that, I post, I'm posting as a parent, a CPAC parent, not as a school committee member.
Right, so you would still be able to continue to do that. My point is really, when we have communications as a board, and those communications are being put out there in the public, that we communicate those with one voice, one face, one spokesperson.
Right. So, here's an example. When the state government starts talking about Chapter 70 funding, we as individuals, until we vote on a resolution, we as individuals can go and comment all we want. But if we then finally wrote a resolution, and, you know, we should, then that resolution should be distributed by the Chair, whoever the Chair is at that point. But that's a school committee topic that, you know, you might want to comment on, on social media as you as an individual.
As an individual.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the, so the question then becomes, how do people know if you're commenting as an individual or as a school committee member? And that's where it just gets so murky so fast.
And that's where masks needs to come in and probably give us some more guidance on that, but it is a gray area. And you might find yourself in some kind of knee-deep water, because some people might see you as a parent, and some others might see you as a school committee member. You had that same issue, if you wrote an article to the Hingham Journal, and you signed your name, and it might be on a school issue, some people might say, well, that's. Some people might say, "Well, that's Libby Luickie writing as a school committee member." And you could say, "No, no, it's just my opinion as a taxpayer in this town." So it is a gray area and I think that's for every individual to decide for themselves. Unfortunately, there's, it's...
I think it relates to, if we agree on a statement, that we as a group agreed on the statement, then the chair should be distributing the statement.
Right.
So that's what I was saying earlier, that there's really sort of two issues here. There's one about sharing information that as a body we have agreed to.
Right.
And then there's a separate issue of people when they do their own individual posts, which everyone has the right to do and, you know, simply because you're elected to the school committee doesn't mean you've given up your right to speak...
Right.
...as an individual, to individual things, to, you know, so people can still do that. So that's why I think the mask guidance though will be helpful in, in walking us through the gray areas of when you're posting and how you should post things on social media when you're doing it individually. But when we are having official posts that are posted to the Hingham Public Schools website and then those get, how, how, where and how should those get shared to the community?
Right, that's my question.
Yes, so...
So I think we've all agree that it would be you. How did that happen?
All right.
Well, so, do you...
And then the question is where, now, what official groups do we want to share to?
So let me, sorry. On the, it should be the chair. I think it should be the chair or the secretary, or the vice chair, or the community, just because, I mean, I'm on a bill, I'm traveling for four days and I'm not on Facebook.
Or as we agree. I mean, how about chair or designee?
Designee, yeah. Chair or designee.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Because I, I'm not, like, I'm at work, I don't, I can't, I'm not on social media when I'm at work or if I'm traveling for work. So you don't want six days to go by before something gets posted because I'm in doubt. Right? So chair or designee?
You can do it on your phone.
I could, but I took it off my phone because it's way distracted.
I mean, it's, it's that we agree on, it's a statement from our group and we're agreeing on who's distributing it is really the problem.
But you're posting on the school committee sort of like page, right? The chair would be, or the designee would be posting on the school committee social media page, right?
The Hingham Public Schools Facebook page.
So, but when one of us, if we had access to it and posted, it would not show our name, would show only the Hingham School Committee, right? It doesn't show the individual name.
It would say, but posted by?
It does say posted by?
Well, on those pages it would.
If you share it to a group, you have to...
No, not share. No, our group, we have a group.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh, yeah, but it doesn't show who...
Doesn't show who, no.
Who posted it.
So that's what, that's what I have been saying, that we all should have the freedom to post there because it is, if it is on behalf of the school committee, we have to be careful.
Right.
Well, right now, it's the chair of Community Outreach that posts to the Hingham Public Schools page. And that would, is me as of now, and I've only done with what the board has agreed...
But it doesn't say, "This is Kay Proctor..."
That's not, yeah.
No.
It doesn't show my name.
And I'm glad that it doesn't. I think that shows that it comes from all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, either way, I have no problem with it.
All right. So you can still share to your individual or school committee pages yourselves. And then, but the...
Official communications from the school committee.
You can share, you still can share individually on your individual page and/or your school committee page, your individual school committee page. And then, all right, so, so it'll be, and then any other place that it's being shared, the chair or the designee will post. And then now we just have to determine where those places are. So CPAC, for sure. Original?
Well, I mean...
To share information? I mean, right?
Then, so then there's education pinboard and then there's Pinboard 2.0. So are you going to do all three of them?
So I think not, no, well, that's what we're going to, let's, we're trying to do one at a time, so...
I like Liza's idea of groups that have some kind of affiliation with Hingham Public Schools.
Okay, yeah. No, I'm just throwing it, I'm just throwing it out there.
I think you need the general community too. So I think you look at...
True, because, right, people who don't necessarily have students in the school but are still going to be interested in things like art articles for the town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I don't even know, what are the, the biggest pages? I mean, what about the anchor? You know, it's...
They're not a group, they're a page.
Yeah, it's like the PTO's that post to their own pages.
Right, you can't post anything to our page purposely if you don't want...
But do we want to distribute to them? Do we want to be proactive about having them as this distribution list?
Well, I think the chair, the Community Outreach chair could say... Since I know what I'm posting for everybody, I can just send out a little blurb, "Hey, heads-up, I just posted communication from the school committee. You may want to share it to your page."
Yeah.
And that way the PTOs don't, yeah, just an email, don't miss the communication. And they can get it up in their newsletter wherever they want to post it.
Right.
If you guys come up with a list and then, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
But I don't think there's any other...
I don't either.
So there's Friends of Hingham, right? There's the...
Well, they're like a PTO, maybe Friends of Hingham Public Schools.
Could we, does, if, is someone, could we develop a list over the next couple of days and just send it around?
Okay.
Because, right, because...
Their next announcement is the superintendent, right?
Okay.
I mean, we don't have anything else, we're going to be...
Right. I got CPAC on my...
I'll, I'll give it some thought and make a suggestion to the entire group.
Okay. And if people have suggestions, send them to you, Kay?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be perfect.
Okay.
But we don't have to do it to all of the pages that are out there. Raise them to...
Right, yeah, right, that's what we're doing, yes. So we're limiting, right.
And I will, okay, perfect. I think then we're, thank you, everyone, that we came to an agreement on this.
I'm going to beat you to that post.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. No, thank you, thank you for circling back on this because it was something that we had talked about and we had wanted to get together.
I just want to make sure that there was a true agreement, that we really understand it also and, and I'll explain it to you another time.
Just give me the clavicle.
All right. And Carrie, you're going to reach out to Mass about getting, okay, awesome, thank you. All right, any other discussion on that? Timely and important matter? No? All right. Now then, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Carrie would make that motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Liza, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meeting adjourned. Thank you.